Evening, one and all. Thank you for joining us tonight. My name is Patty Mallon. I am the Licensing Specialist here at the City of Tacoma Park. That means I work upstairs in the Housing Department and I help folks with licensing their rental units. And I'm joined today by Lisa Givoni from the Montgomery County Planning Department. We're going to be talking about ADUs, Accessory Dwelling Units. We're going to define them. We're going to explain what they are, what the situation is in Tacoma Park currently with ADUs. And Lisa's going to talk to us about a proposal to the county for streamlining the process for licensing more ADUs, removing some of the barriers to having ADUs. Why are we talking about this right now? Well, there is in fact a zoning text amendment that's been proposed to the county. Details about that in a minute. Our city council here in Tacoma Park is going to have a work session on this topic at next week's meeting. So steady up, get your questions ready, submit those. The Montgomery County Planning, Housing and Economic Development Committee, or the Fed, is going to meet to discuss this on March 18th. And then our city council is going to meet again, possibly with a tentative resolution about how Tacoma Park as a city feels about this proposal on the 20th of March. So that's where we are. That's why we're here tonight. All right. What's an accessory dwelling unit? An accessory dwelling unit is an additional dwelling unit along with a single-family home. In Tacoma Park, a lot of these are attached ADUs. Up top here, you see a basement apartment or an attic apartment. Full disclosure, I have a licensed accessory dwelling unit. I have a basement apartment. I'm resident of Tacoma Park. I've got one. And you'll find out later on why no one else on my street is allowed to have a legal one, under the current rules. So that's an attached accessory, attic, basement, or it could be an addition built along the side of the house, for instance. There are also detached accessory dwelling units. That would be like a backyard cottage, for instance, something else on the current lot. Right now, Lisa will explain in more detail, you have to have a pretty big lot to be allowed to have one. That could be changed with the proposal. The important thing about accessory dwelling units in relation to the single-family home is they are in fact a separate unit, even if they're part of the same house, right? You have a separate entrance. It is locked off from the main part of the house. You don't go through the main house to get to this. You go in your own way. So in this top one, which happens to be mine, you see the back door goes right into the apartment, doesn't go into my part, the main part of the house at all. It also has to have a full kitchen and a full bathroom. Okay? So it is a complete dwelling unit on its own, even though it might be attached to the Some good things about ADUs and some of the reasons why this proposal has been put forth to maybe increase the number of these. One is it creates affordable rental units. We are always talking about affordable housing. The council has a strategic plan for housing that includes affordable housing as one of the items in it. When you have an apartment in somebody's basement, or someone's attic, or the cottage in the backyard, that increases the number of units available for rent, right? It's also important to the homeowner in that it can create an income stream, all right? This is good for young families who want to live in Tacoma Park. They want to live in Montgomery County because they want to be with the schools. They want to be where the good schools are, or in that nice neighborhood. You know what single-family homes cost around here. You may not be able to buy a house where you really want to live, where you want to bring up your family, unless you have another income stream. You may not need that whole entire house right now. It could be that an apartment on the lower level or in the attic is going to give you an income stream that's going to help make your mortgage, so you can be in that place where you want to be. It also helps at the other end, seniors who want to stay in their house. Their kids are gone, they've got a lot of house. If part of that house becomes an ADU, that's an income stream that helps seniors age in place. We talk about that all the time in Tacoma Park. Seniors want to age in place. They want to stay here in this community. That helps make it affordable to do that, if you can have that income stream right there. I am, you know, I'm a single mom, my kid's going off to college, you know, I've got my lovely full-time job here at the city, but I live in Tacoma Park, right? I got to make ends meet, so the ADU is what's helping me stay in my house. Now, when I went from two incomes to one income, it was the ADU that made the difference that let me stay in Tacoma Park. The other thing ADUs do is they create density near transit. That's Tacoma Park, right here. We've got the metro, we have the bus lines, we've got the Purple Line coming in. You want more people to live where there is transit, so you're not necessarily bringing more cars in, right? You want people to live where they can move around, closer to where they work, all of those things. And they don't necessarily change the character of the neighborhood. They're kind of invisible. I mean, if you have a house in the back, maybe a little bit more visible, but it's not a lot of new construction right out in front where everybody can see it, right? It's going to use the same infrastructure. It's not developing new land, new lots, no sprawl. It's infill. All right. What about ADUs in Tacoma Park right now? Because ADUs are associated with single-family homes, and they're in places that are zoned for single-family homes, the county is involved in the approval process because you're asking for a second unit in a place that's zoned for just the one. So right now, the initial approval to have that accessory dwelling unit comes from the county. If you want to rent that unit out, once the county has approved it, then you come see me upstairs, and I help you get that licensed as a rental unit. And then from then on, the City of Tacoma Park will do the oversight, carrying on from that moment forward. The licensing is going to include, and this is important, inspections, right? Because we want to make sure that it's a livable place, that it's safe, that it's up to code, health and safety, it's up to code for property maintenance. You're not overcrowding, people have a good place to live. Right now, we have just over 60 licensed ADUs in Tacoma Park. Most of those are attached, right? They're part of the main house. You all know where they are. They're in all wards. We're weighted more heavily in wards one, two, and three. A big part of that is zoning because larger swaths of those wards are zoned for single-family than in the other wards. Here's an interesting thing about the people who have the ADUs. 97% give or take have biennial licenses. Let me tell you what that means. When you have a rental license in Tacoma Park, it can be annual or biennial, and that's based on your inspection. If the inspector comes through, you've got no health and safety violations. Maybe one or two cosmetic things, you need a new coat of paint, though, you know, this needs to be fixed over here. You'll get a biennial license, which means you're going to get inspected every two years. You're going to pay a licensing fee every two years. We're still going to see you regularly, but you've bought yourself some extra time. If there are larger issues, you'll stay on an annual inspection. 97% have biennial licenses. That means they're in great shape, right? The owner occupies the main part of the house, currently is renting out the smaller area, they're on site, and they're making sure that it's in good shape. The other thing is, the other part of the good landlord, the good property owner, is that they're all renewing their licenses on time. It's my job to follow up on folks who haven't paid their fee, or gotten their inspection, or whatever. That's not happening with accessory dwelling units. The people that have these are good landlords. They've got people in their own homes, so this is really kind of great for a lot of people. Interestingly, the rules changed in 2013 to supposedly make it a little bit easier to have an accessory dwelling unit approved, yet only six in Tacoma Park have been approved since that time. Hopefully, these changes, if they go through, will eliminate some of the barriers that are still there. All right. I'm going to have Lisa tell you more specifically about the actual ZTA.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Lisa Givoni. I'm the Housing Planner for the Montgomery County Planning Department. And I'm going to talk a little bit about zoning tax amendment number 1901. So a little history about ADUs in Montgomery County is, as Patty was mentioning, pre-2013, they were reviewed under what we call "special exception," or now the "conditional use" process. And what that basically means is you needed planning approval, and then you had to go to the hearing examiner. That was basically a six-months process. It was long. We only averaged about 10 a year in the county, and we decided during the zoning code rewrite, we want to look at accessory dwelling units and how we could do these a little bit more efficiently. So, and ZTA 1211, which was adopted in 2013, allows accessory dwelling units as a limited use. And we'll get into that and what that means, but it basically is a "buy-ride" process. And what does that mean? That means if you meet the limited standards, that you can go straight to DPS and build, get your permit, get your licensing, and you can build your accessory dwelling unit. And then, the last fall, ZTA 1807 looked at the two main standards for accessory dwelling units, which was parking and spacing. And we'll get into that, what that means, but if you did not meet those limited uses, you could apply for a waiver with the hearing examiner. And what that did is that cut out the Planning Department, and it sped up the process a little bit. So previously, if you did not meet the parking and the spacing requirements, you had to fire, file with the hearing examiner. But now, you can go straight to the hearing examiner and get a waiver, and it cuts the process to about two to three months. But we're always looking for ways to create more flexibility. So added ZTA 1901, and that generally amends a lot of the provisions of accessory dwelling units, and we'll get into that. So the first one, as you can tell, the red is everything that's being taken out of the zoning code, and the black is what's staying. And this has to do with spacing. So as a holdover from the special exception process, in your large-lot zones, you had to be 500 feet away from another accessory dwelling. That's why Patty's neighbors can't have an accessory dwelling unit. And in your small-lot zones, it was 300 feet. And there's a map on the DHS website that actually maps all of the accessory dwelling units in the county, so you can kind of see if you wanted to build one. Does my neighbor have one? Can I build one? But the ZTA 1901 takes that out of the zoning code. And one of the other things it does is, for detached accessory apartments, you have to have right now a minimum of one acre. And I don't know about you, but there are not a lot of one-acre lots in downtown Montgomery County. So basically, if you are down county, you're not going to be able to build a detached ADU. And we have a lot of people that have been interested in doing that, and we've had to tell them no. So it also generally amends the use standards. The property must still be the owner's primary address. You can't rent both the principal dwelling and the accessory dwelling unit. You must be either residing in the principal or the accessory dwelling unit. It takes out, the house must be five years old, so we could have, you know, there's not a lot of infill or greenfield development, but if someone were to build, you know, a subdivision and they had accessory dwellings, they could do that now. And again, the ADU must have the same street address as the house, that's because they have to have, must be in the principal dwelling. And the ADU must be internalized to the main dwelling out of property smaller than one acre, that takes that out, and a complete separation of units is required, that takes that out too. But one ADU must make, has to say, only one ADU on a lot is allowed. You cannot have a quadruplex or a triplex, it must be an accessory use. So size, the ZTA 1901 basically takes out the size provision. It used to have a size maximum, that was taken out. And what it does is it changes from gross to habitable. One of the things we heard as a deterrent for accessory dwelling units is how they were measured. So a lot of times, you'll have a basement ADU, and they'll have the furnace, and they'll, it's not livable space, but they were measuring it to include that in the accessory dwelling unit, and suddenly, it was too large of a space to have an accessory dwelling unit. So this generally fixes that, so that we can have, you know, creation of more accessory dwelling units. And the big one, parking, that was pretty much the main concern that we heard at the public hearing, and it's kind of the heart of this. So previously, you needed two parking spaces for your principal dwelling, and then you needed one parking space for your accessory dwelling unit. And if you did not meet those, you could either go to the hearing examiner or get a waiver. But now, this changes it so that you have to have two on-street parking spaces are required. And if you do not meet that, then you can still go to the hearing examiner, but it reduces the requirement by one. So this is just some of the additional 1901 provisions. So before 2012, if your house was built, you can add an accessory apartment. And it also deletes the requirement for a separate entrance to be located on the side or the rear. If you have, you know, that English basement that you can enter from the front, you can have that as an accessory dwelling unit. And the owner can live in either the accessory or the principal dwelling. And if you have any questions, I'm here. But generally, like Patty said, the county council is still taking comments. They will take comments until they vote, and you can email them at county.council@montgomerymd.gov, or you can send me your comments, and I will forward them along.
Where do they vote at?
So they have two Fed work sessions scheduled right now. There might be a third at and on, and then it will go to full council, but the, let's see, I believe she had. So there. So the first Fed work session is the 18th, I believe, the second is the 25th.
Hi. Hi. It's up. So just to understand, I'm new to this. The ADU that you're proposing is for a new external structure, right?
It doesn't have to be new. Like, it could be a basement, it could be a garage that you are converting, but if you are adding square feet, then it is no longer new.
Okay. But, sorry, just to clarify, and then, does that mean that if you have a garage and you convert it into an apartment, or whatever, ADU, can you rent that out and can you rent the basement?
No, you can only have one accessory dwelling unit at a time.
That's what I'm, okay. Okay. As an ADU, okay.
Right. Another thing that might be of interest to folks here is this currently, and, is my mic, it will be, is my mic still on?
No.
Okay.
You want me to hear you?
Okay, how about now? Is that better? Okay. So one of the things that stays in zoning with this new ZTA also is that accessory units cannot be used as Airbnb. They are not short-term rentals, okay? And so you can't mix it up. Like, my apartment that I have, I can't fill in with posting on Airbnb while in between tenants. It's either a regular rental property, or I can register separately with the county as short-term rentals. It's one or the other. You can't mix those up.
What's short-term?
30 days or less.
So I've got two questions. So if you start out with an ADU that's integral to your dwelling, like a basement apartment, and you have that for a number of years, and then you decide, oh, you know, I'd like to put up like a detached garage-type studio slash with the dwelling unit in it, and say, forfeit the ADU in the house and transfer it, is that also possible?
Yeah, you could not keep both at one time. Yeah, if you were to give up the one in the basement in favor of the detached unit, that would be...
But you can only have one.
Right. But that, so, but that whole process is tenable, then?
Yeah.
Okay. And then my other question is about parking. That's two spots they can be on-street in front of the house?
Yeah.
Well, they're supposed to be on-site.
They're on-site. So if you, they're supposed to be on-site, which, if you are in a lot that did not have, if you do not have on-site parking, then you would be required to create a driveway.
So that is something that you can get a waiver for. For instance, on my street, like many streets in Tacoma Park, I have one of the very few driveways, right? Most people in my neighborhood are parking on the street. So right now, even with the way this is currently written, this proposal, my neighbors would still have to apply for a waiver for parking, because there just isn't any on-site parking. You can talk to your council people, for instance, or you can send comments into the county about, hey, we sure do live close to transit, maybe you could consider waiving this whole thing if you live within a distance of transit. So think about, we can think creatively. There's time to act on this before it gets voted on.
Right. Yeah. I'm just thinking, you know, just in terms of my property, I have a really steep, kind of it goes up and then it goes down, and it's really like not an optimal driveway situation. And, but then also, I've got plenty of room, you know, frontage on the street, but there are a good number of apartments already, multiple families and stuff, in several of the houses on my street, and they often will park in front of my house. And so that like takes up that extra space, and that's why I wanted to, you know, kind of bring that up and, you know, have that be addressed.
And we've heard that a lot. We've heard a lot of people, we've heard a lot of parking concerns, a lot of people saying, you know, I live within a half-mile of transit or a future Purple Line station. I really don't think this is necessary. It's something that came up when we did Airbnb. I think that we will have a long discussion about parking in terms of accessory dwelling units at the Fed Committee.
Hi. I'm not sure you're aware of the fact that in 1993, there were three non-contiguous areas in Tacoma Park that were annexed into the city. They were part of unincorporated Hyattsville, and they were mostly R-55 zone, and they were Prince George's County. And Circle Avenue, the block where my house is, is a unique street. In fact, Hans Reimer's brother lived in one of the houses with the apartments. There are many houses in Tacoma Park that are actually multiple apartments. So this is not an ADU situation per se, or I'm questioning, is that an ADU situation? My use and occupancy permit and others say "single-family dwellings with add units," plural. That's what it says from Prince George's County at the time that we came in and were grandfathered to keep that designation. So that's a unique designation. I don't know if it applies with the ADU, because I don't think anybody's asking to build or add more apartments. They just exist with these apartments in them already, and I'm wondering how this will affect those apartments, if they will at all.
We're not changing the zoning on anyone's apartment. It sounds like you have a unique case. We're talking about something that really, we're only dealing with two units. That's the most you can have. You have a principal dwelling, tends to be larger, and then you have the accessory use, and that diagram kind of shows, that's basically the limit of what we're talking about. We're not talking about quadruplexes or single-family homes designed as apartments.
So we need to head over to the Azalea Room because the council needs to carry on with their meeting in a few minutes. So we will happily take additional questions right across the hall, and there's a room where there's cookies. So there's that. So thank you all for coming, and we'll see you over there.
Thank you.
Call to order this session at Tacoma Park City Council. Will the Clerk please call the law?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Cobar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Costin.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Resident.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Sirci.
Here.
All right, good evening, everyone. There are no changes this evening to our agenda. Moving forward next week on, let's see, actually, this week still, on Thursday, tomorrow evening, the City Council has an administrative function session at 6:00 PM where we'll meet with the City Attorney in administrative function session. Those are closed to the public. And then on next Wednesday, March 13th, we're here, our meeting starts at 7:30. We have a proposed ordinance, we have a public hearing on a proposed ordinance prohibiting the commercial use of plastic beverage straws and stirs. We'll have a report from our youth council that evening. Our voting session will be a resolution adopting the FY 2020 Green Team priorities, a resolution adopting our council priorities, a resolution declaring a climate emergency, and a single reading ordinance authorizing a contract for architectural services. Our work sessions next week is a discussion of the Economic Development Section of the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan and update on the economic development activities, a discussion of accessory dwelling units and ZTA 19-01, and a discussion of committee appointments. And then on Wednesday, March 20th, we'll be back here at 7:30. We'll have a proclamation for Arbor Day, which is on April 6th. We'll have a presentation on an update on the library renovation. NDC will be here to update us on the Tacoma Junction project. We'll have a voting session, the first reading ordinance prohibiting the commercial use of plastic beverage straws and stirs. Tentatively, we'll have a resolution regarding the accessory dwelling units and ZTA 19-01, and a resolution providing for appointments to committees. And then on Wednesday, March 27th, the City Council is not in session that evening, so we will not have a meeting that night. Just as a report out, we did have an administrative function session to meet with the City Manager last Wednesday evening. This was a follow-up to her evaluation. We had asked, the City Council does a review of the City Manager once a year, and during our last review, we thought it would be a good idea to do a mid-year check-in and not wait a full year, and so that's what we did. We followed up on the goals and the formal recommendations that we had made a few months ago. And so that was our administrative function last week. I just want to see our, we had minutes from January 9th to and January 16th. Do council members ready to vote on those? Yes, okay. Will someone like to move adoption of the minutes for January 9th and January 16th? Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second? Councilwoman Dibala, any discussion or changes? No, all of those in favor of adoption of the minutes from January 9th and January 16th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstaining? All right, that will take us now to the first of two presentations we have this evening. Our first is a report on our resident survey. Does our Deputy C. Manager want to say anything, or as a way of introduction?
Sure, we have Erin Caldwell from National Research Center, who I've been working with over the past few months as we finalized the survey instrument and distributed it to residents, and she's here to present the results of the survey. She'll talk about the methodology as well, and then get into some high-level summary of what the report revealed. The report itself, as well as these slides, are posted to the website as part of the agenda, and sometime later this week, I'll be updating the community survey webpage to include this information.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I am happy to be here tonight to present the results, but before I started, I actually wanted to thank Jason. He was our primary contact throughout this process, and he was a pleasure to work with and gave us good insights.
So before I give you a quick overview of the survey methods and how we conducted the survey, I just wanted to touch briefly on one of the efforts we conducted on your behalf before we did the survey. We helped to facilitate two focus groups last fall, one with residents who were immigrants from African countries and one with Spanish-speaking residents. And one of the reasons we engaged in this effort was to determine if there were items or questions that we wanted to add to the survey, based on what we heard from these typically underrepresented groups. So for some of the topics raised in the groups, there were already items or questions on the survey. I listed a few examples here on this slide, like about affordability of housing, wanting more stores and restaurants, that maybe the city could do a better job of listening, or wanting communication in some various different modes. Other topics were raised that did result in changes to the survey. And again, I've put a few examples here. They talked some about disputes with landlords or issues between landlords and tenants. Loitering was an issue that came up fairly frequently, and then safety in parks. And then finally, also, we added a question, how would you rate the way the City of Tacoma Park provides services in your language? And so these were some changes that came out of those focus groups. So then we were ready to start the survey process. So the final survey instrument was crafted through an iterative process with NRC and the City of Tacoma Park, and we conducted the survey using Survey Research Best Practices. Three thousand households were randomly selected to receive the survey. These selected households received four mailings, beginning in November of 2018. So the first of those mailings was a pre-notification postcard, letting the household know that they were selected to receive the survey. We like that as a first contact because you don't even have to open an envelope, the message is right there, keep an eye out for it. The second mailing is the survey itself with a cover letter that was signed by the mayor. And we do this, the branding with the City of Tacoma Park in this appeal to try to increase that response rate and, you know, give people this chance that they can participate and influence their city. The cover letter and the survey were mailed to residents in English and in Spanish. The cover letter also included a paragraph in French and Amharic that described the contents of the packet and said you could find somebody to help you do the survey who maybe can read English, or there was a number that they could call. The third mailing was actually a whole another packet of the survey with that postage-paid envelope, but this time the cover letter did say, if you've already done the survey, you know, we don't need you to do it again, but if you haven't, please do. And it's pretty important because we get about 30% of our total responses from that second mailing, so it helps to increase response rate and also the representativeness of the results. And then finally, we did a reminder postcard. We received 826 completed surveys for 29% response rate. And so for a sample of this size, that margin of error, a term we're kind of used to hearing around election results, is plus or minus three percentage points, and that's just a measure of the precision of results. And that is, again, for the the sample as a whole. Oh, and then our final step was that we weighted the survey data before we produced the reported results. So what weighting the survey data means, it's one of the Survey Research Best Practices, is we look at the demographic profile of the respondents to the survey and compare it to that of adults in Tacoma Park, and we use the American Community Survey from the U.S. Census Bureau as that population norm. We know, even though we've done some good efforts to try to increase response rate, we're still going to have, you know, lower response rate from certain groups than from others. For example, younger people, and you can see this here, I'll explain this graph, tend to respond at a lower rate, and older adults tend to respond at a higher rate. So on this graph, you can, or these series of graphs, the sort of green teal bar, the first one in each set, that's the population norm from the American Community Survey. The tan one in the middle is what we got without any weighting. And then the blue one is the result after we weighted the data. So that's just a statistical adjustment, so we give like more weight to responses from younger people and less weight to those from older people. And the theory behind that is the younger people we heard from are more like the younger people we didn't hear from than they are like the old people that we did hear from, the older people. And so it just rebalances that. So now I get to get into the survey results, and I have mostly good news for you tonight. There were a total of 45 items on the survey that we had comparisons to in a database that we keep of surveys that we've done, and we also look at surveys that have been done by other organizations for communities across the nation. And where there's similar questions, we put those into our database so that we can make these benchmark comparisons. And so on the Tacoma Park survey, there were 45 items that we had similar items in our database and could make this comparison. Among those, 17 received higher ratings in Tacoma Park, 27 received similar, and one received a lower rating. Four of the items receiving higher ratings were actually much higher than the benchmark, and these included sense of community, cultural or arts events, openness and acceptance of people of diverse backgrounds, and access to public transit. And the lower item was preventing crime. Okay, so I'm not going to recite every survey statistic to you this evening, although I am going to give you a lot of them, but the results I'm going to share tonight are organized around key findings that we at NRC thought were interesting takeaways from the survey. And I want to emphasize that, it's stuff we thought was interesting. As you look through the report, which is like 300 pages, there's a lot of information, and there may be other things that you find that are interesting or things you want to take action on, but we've organized for now this around the the things that we thought were interesting. So you've probably read this while I was talking, but our first key finding was that Tacoma Park residents appreciate their community but are concerned about the cost of housing. Nearly half of respondents would describe the quality of life in Tacoma Park as excellent, and another 44% considered it good. So about nine in 10 said it was excellent or good. And this evaluation was higher than the national benchmark comparison and was similar to what we have seen from your previous surveys. So this implementation of the survey was the fourth. There was one in 2007, 2009, and 2014 as well. The most common reasons given for choosing to live in Tacoma Park were the proximity to Washington, D.C. and access to public transportation. Also high on the list were that Tacoma Park is a progressive community and the diversity of people in Tacoma Park. About half chose Tacoma Park for being an attractive or safe community, and the proportion choosing the last four items on this slide represented an increase in 2018 compared to 2014, and that's what that little slanty brown arrow indicates. We asked residents how they would rate the quality of life in their neighborhood, and what we saw in 2018 was almost nine in 10 said it was excellent or good, and this was a rating that was higher than the benchmark and also represents an increase that we've seen since 2000, oh, you know, I'm sorry, that's probably should be 2007 and 2009. Pardon me for that error there, but from your previous surveys. Residents were also asked to rate the extent to which that various issues were a problem in their neighborhood. Most of the issues presented were not considered a very big problem for 20%, with 20% or fewer saying that any of them were a major or extreme problem. But the issues that were most likely to be considered a moderate, major, or extreme problem were traffic volume and traffic speeding. You can see those at the top there, we had roughly 40% saying each were at least a moderate problem in their neighborhood, and that was a increase from what we saw in 2014. The proportion considering parking a problem also increased from 23% in 2014 to 31% in 2018. And finally, the proportion of residents who said crime was at least a moderate problem in their neighborhood has decreased dramatically over time. It was 62% in 2007, and it's down to 33% in 2018. In addition to rating various aspects of the quality of life in Tacoma Park, those completing the questionnaire were asked to rate various asp, oh, okay, I'll just keep going this way. Were asked to rate various aspects of the quality of the community. So these aspects also received favorable ratings for the most part, with 12 of the 19 characteristics receiving a grade of excellent or good by more than 80% of respondents. Benchmark comparisons were available for 11 of these 19 characteristics, and seven were higher and four were similar. Lowest rated characteristics, I'm just going to keep going on, you probably saw it on there before, were related to affordability. So I'm going to have to find my spot here, just a second. Not to use presenter mode. Were related to affordability, so access to good, quality, affordable childcare was considered excellent or good by only 44% of respondents, but that was similar to the benchmark, so not uncommon in communities in the U.S. And then availability of good, quality, affordable housing was considered excellent or good by only about three in 10 respondents. Again, that's similar to the benchmark, but it does represent a decline from 2014 in Tacoma When asked to rate the condition of housing in Tacoma Park, residents were generally positive, with nearly three-quarters giving an excellent or good rating to the physical condition of housing in the city and in their neighborhood or their own ward. Conversely, though, this does mean that, you know, about one-quarter gave ratings of only fair or poor. Residents were less enthusiastic, as we kind of saw on the previous slide, about housing affordability of their own home, with only about half saying that was excellent or good. Only about four in 10 considered the city's progress over the past five years in the areas of creating and preserving affordable housing as excellent or good. Our next key finding is that Tacoma Park is seen as a community that is open and accepting of people with diverse backgrounds. Nearly nine in 10 residents rated this as excellent or good, and that was a rating that was that was much higher than the benchmark. The sense of community was also rated as excellent or good by nine in ten residents and was also much higher than the benchmark comparison. And about eight in ten respondents agreed that they feel included as a part of the Tacoma Park community. We don't have a benchmark for that one, but seems very positive. The survey was used to explore to what extent residents believe they have experienced various types of discrimination. And the way we asked this question is, they were asked if they had been treated unfairly, refused services, or experienced discrimination in Tacoma Park, because of these various categories that are shown on the slide. So, five percent said they had experienced discrimination because of their race or color, three percent for some other reason, two percent because of a disability, and then a handful for these other categories. So, if we look across all of those categories, it was about nine percent who said that they had experienced discrimination for one or more of these reasons. To make these data a little more useful, then, we kind of looked at reports of discrimination by the corresponding demographic characteristics. So, looking at experiencing discrimination because of race or color, almost no whites said that they had. Those who identified as black, eight percent said that they had experienced some kind of discrimination, and fourteen percent of those who were other races or two or more races had experienced some kind of discrimination. We had only handful of people who identified as something other than male or female, but among them, about twenty percent said that they had experienced discrimination because of their gender identity. And then one that I thought was kind of interesting was for marital status. Six percent of people who were widowed said they had experienced discrimination because of their marital status. We didn't ask about age discrimination, and I don't know if that also plays into that a little bit. It might be interesting to add that to a future survey. So, then we asked, well, what kinds of experiences of discrimination had you had if you had experienced it? So, I just want to emphasize that these percents you're seeing here are only among those nine percent of people who said they had experienced discrimination. It's not that thirty-eight percent of the whole, everybody we talked to said that they had experienced discrimination in homeownership or rental housing, for example. So, that plus treatment by city officials or responsiveness of city government were some of the top reasons that people gave for the kinds of experiences that they had Survey respondents were also asked how they felt the Tacoma City Park government was in, doing in promoting inclusivity and fairness. Over eight in ten respondents agreed that the Tacoma City Government welcomes citizen involvement or welcomes resident involvement, and three-quarters agreed that the city government is really run for the benefit of all people. About six in ten respondents agreed that the City of Tacoma Park was ensuring resources and services are fairly inequitably allocated throughout the city. So, we, again, we had large proportions who agreed with these. That one about ensuring resources and services are fairly inequitably allocated, we still have then about four in ten who said that was only a fair or poor job that the city was doing. And our next key finding, residents gave high grades to the performance of Tacoma Park City Government and the services provided. Eighty-six percent said the overall quality of services was excellent or good, and this was similar to our benchmark comparison. It's similar to what we saw in 2014, but it was higher than we saw in two thousand nine and two thousand seven. Those completing the questionnaire were asked to rate the quality of forty-four specific city services, so I'm not going to put all of those up here for you. But here are the ones that were, got the top ratings, where ninety percent or more said that they were excellent or good. I mean, those top two, trash recycling and weekly yard waste collection, we had benchmark comparisons for, and those were higher. And then this slide kind of shows, again, the services that were above the benchmark comparison, the five there that were. And then we also looked at, well, which ones were higher or lower compared to 2014? Three services saw increases from 2014: fall vacuum leaf collection, snow and ice removal, and the city's website. Two decreased, and that was athletic fields and playgrounds and storm water management. Residents were asked how strongly they agreed or disagreed with nine statements gauging whether or not the city was taking adequate measures to address specific issues. I mean, for many of these, the ratings were fairly positive, with nine in ten saying that the city does a good job protecting the natural environment and reducing solid waste and promoting recycling and composting. About three-quarters or so said that the city does an excellent or good job at providing safe walking routes throughout the city and maintaining public infrastructure, and these two items saw an increase since 2014. Then we have less than half of respondents saying that the city is doing an adequate job of addressing traffic congestion, and that's actually lower than what we saw in In the twelve months prior to the survey, about sixty percent of residents said they had had contact with a city employee, either in person, by phone, by email, through social media, or some other means. Instead, the city employees were given good grades by residents who had interacted with them. Nearly half said their impression was excellent, and another four in ten said it was good. The survey did include a variety of questions about shopping and economic development in Tacoma Park. The frequency with which residents shop at various commercial areas in the city was assessed, and respondents reflected on what shopping opportunities were missing in Tacoma Park. About seven in ten residents thought that the dining opportunities in Tacoma Park were excellent or good. However, only about half felt that retail shopping opportunities were excellent or good, but this was similar to the benchmark, what we see in communities across the nation, and it did represent an increase from 2014. Grocery shopping opportunities were considered excellent or good also by about half of respondents. We don't have a benchmark comparison for this one. Of the six shopping areas included on the survey, Old Town and Tacoma Junction were the shopping areas visited most frequently. Each of those had been visited more than once a month in the previous year by just over half of residents. This slide is actually showing the proportion of residents who had ever visited each of these in the previous year. Visitation trended slightly upwards compared to 2014 for those shopping areas that were included on both surveys, particularly for the New Hampshire Avenue corridor. The most common reason for patronizing Tacoma Park's commercial areas was to purchase food or to eat out. About nine in ten residents had shopped for groceries or food items, and three-quarters had gone out to eat. About two-thirds of respondents had sought retail goods, while about two-thirds had looked for household items. However, while nearly all those completing the survey said they had shopped for food and most had had a dining experience in Tacoma Park in the last year, these were also the types of stores or services most likely to be felt lacking. And maybe residents are looking for a variety or different types of food purveyors than, you know, they're already using. Groceries, restaurant bars, apparel and shoes, and bottled wines and beers were the types of establishments most wanted by respondents. Demand for groceries has actually increased since 2014. We asked the same question, while the desire for restaurants and bars and bottled wines and beers has decreased a little bit. And actually, I had this one out of order. We did also ask residents how they would rate the city's progress over the last five years in the area of economic development, and about two-thirds said it was excellent or good, with about one-third saying it was fair or poor. So, in conclusion, some of the strengths that we saw from this survey of the community are that this is a high-quality community, that Tacoma City Park services are well-reviewed, and also that there's high marks, people feel good about diversity and inclusion in Tacoma Park. Some of the opportunities are that, for housing that is affordable, for economic development, particularly maybe that grocery stores. And I've also put diversity, inclusion on this part as well, because while you're doing well, there's obviously still room for improvement. We had nine percent of respondents saying they had experienced some kind of discrimination, and again, at least like one in ten saying that the community's not open and accepting or rating some of those items a little lower. So, oops, right. Oh, one thing I wanted to say, using survey results. I mentioned we have that really big report for you, and we do hope that you will use these survey results. There's a link there that talks about what we call the six Es of action, and we had to work hard to come up with an E word for each one of these. But envision is like making plans, engaging is, you know, working with other stakeholders in the community. Educate might be if you're just thinking, well, why are they rating this low and we think it's really good? Maybe we just need to let people know about what is available or what we're doing. Earmark is maybe making budget decisions with the survey results. And act would be creating policies or advocating for certain policies. And then evaluate. You've been doing this survey over time, so you can see how you're doing on certain items. You also may make certain changes, and you might want to evaluate those changes, not necessarily through the survey, but in another way, but that we would encourage you to keep doing that. So, that is now the end of my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Erin. And I just want to note for people that the full report, one of the things that I find most useful are the tables at the back that break down the survey responses, not only by the different years, but by race and ethnicity, age, ward, and other things. And so, I think that has been very useful to look through over the last couple of weeks. So, thank you very much. So, I think, well, before we have our police department up that just received some good news before they give us the report, I'll ask my colleagues for any questions of Erin. And also, just to say, it wasn't on our agenda this evening, but we will be coming back to the survey results after this to talk more with the staff about, as Erin said, some of those, was it six Es? Some of the six Es and how that we can actually put into action what we're learning here from the survey. But tonight, while we still have Erin, does anyone have any questions? Councilmember Circe.
Hi, Erin.
Hi.
I just want to say thank you so much for all of the hard work that NRC put into this report. I know it could be challenging to not only field a survey such as this and conduct focus groups, but also analyze in a digestible way the plethora of data that you have had to comb through. And I think the presentation that you gave today was a really great summary. If you were in our shoes, what are some of the key things that you noticed? And you highlighted them a little bit, but I also went through the whole report, so I know that there's a couple of other things that are there, too. What are a couple of key things that you would suggest that we direct our attention to?
I did sort of highlight those in that last slide, too. That affordability seems to be an area of concern, and also that grocery shopping just kind of stuck out to me, like, well, people are doing it, but they're not, seem to be maybe not happy with what's here. And I'm going to say diversity and inclusion, too, because while your ratings are very high, there is always room for improvement, and we did, I'm just going to let it go. We did look at, in the report, and there are also more cross tabs, sort of what I would call disparities, like, you know, how are people of color rating the community versus white people? And, you know, there were some differences there. Sometimes it was actually the opposite, like, few things that was actually better, but there are some things there. So, that would be one thing I'd look at. And then also, I didn't touch on differences by ward, but there were some differences by ward that you might also want to look at. We saw that on that one slide that I said, I think, six in ten say that the city's doing an excellent or good job at, you know, being equitable in the distribution of resources and services, but four in ten feel differently. So, that could be a way to look. Something I want to concentrate on, I guess.
Councilmember Acostic.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate Councilmember Circe's thanks for this. There's so much information here, and it's really useful and something that I think we should delve deeper into and really analyze more. I just had a couple of comments, more than anything. I found it really interesting that one of the things reported in a couple of different places was that people were concerned about traffic volume and traffic speeds. So, I'm happy that we are addressing some of those issues and working towards considering our transportation planning and outreach related to transportation safety. I also, it also struck me that there was concern about quality, access to good, quality childcare, which is something I hear, I have young kids, and I understand that very, very well, and I hear that from a lot of people as well. So, I think that's something we could focus on more as a city and improving. And then the other thing that really kind of struck me was, I believe the figure was sixty-five percent of the community who participated in the survey had not attended a council meeting in the past two years. So, you know, sometimes we get kind of insular, I think, and we think everything we do here is being followed, and it's a good reminder that it's not, and that we do have to make sure that we're communicating what's happening. And I thought, too, it might be useful to add a question regarding whether people watch online next year, because I know, or the next time that we do it, because I know there are a lot of people in the community who do watch the council meetings but don't come to attend them. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and all the work that went into it. I appreciate it. I think there are a lot of specific things that all of us would note that we need to pay more attention to, and we'll get into those at a future time, I suppose. I just want to ask a couple of things relating, you talked about the methodology and the waiting efforts and so on. It looked a little bit, when I got way toward the back, as if the percentage of respondents who were homeowners or who were white or who spoke English didn't necessarily match, you know, the overall population in the, within the city. I'm just curious if you thought what impact that would likely have, or if there are efforts to try to control for that, or how you would sort of address that.
It's a good question. You know, we all would like to make that better. What you saw, and I could put that slide back up, but I have to figure out how to get to it. But that's not uncommon. This is what we typically see. Like I said, the younger people, people who rent, people who live in multifamily housing tend to respond at a lower rate than others. And so, you know, we do our best practices. We have these multiple contacts and things like that, but we can't force people to do it.
I mean, less as a criticism than just, so when we read the results, should we interpret it as maybe within those categories, it would be higher or lower rates of satisfaction or dissatisfaction?
That's one of the reasons we wait the survey data. So, we did rebalance it so that we're giving more voice to the people in multifamily housing or renters or younger people. So, that's why we do that, so that they do have that voice in the survey. There could be some differences, like, maybe there's something different about the people in multifamily housing who didn't respond than those who did, and there's not a lot we can do to control that, but at least of those who did, even though they're at a lower rate, we inflate so that we are giving them that voice.
And where does that inflation show up? I guess that's what I don't.
If you, well, that slide I showed you where we, you know, you see the blue bar starts to match the teal bar, I think it was. That's how that weighting works.
So, at the end, if it says, say, fifty-eight percent of the people were homeowners, is that a weighted or unweighted number?
That's a weighted number. So, for those of you who've looked at the report, there's an Appendix A where we give the frequency of responses to every survey question. Those are weighted responses. So, when you get to those demographic questions toward the ends, that is the weighted responses. And then in the Survey Methodology Appendix, there's a table that shows several of those demographics characteristics compared to the population norm, and it shows what it was unweighted, and then it shows what it was weighted, so that you can look at that as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks.
Great. And actually, Erin, while you're answering that question, because I know all of us have gotten some emails, and that just reminded me, if you could just spend like thirty seconds talking about the difference in, about this kind of survey that you, as you talked about the methodology you found, that you followed, and how this was projectable to residents in their community versus sort of the online opt-in surveys that we do when we need responses quickly back from folks.
Right. We actually have done some of these open participation surveys, sometimes, coincidental is not the right word, with our scientific survey. We usually ask that a city, like, "Don't open up that survey until after the scientific one's done, because we don't want somebody to get confused if you got that survey. We really want you to respond to that one." And we see that that skew is even greater, and sometimes the opinions don't even match. And even if we do our best to try to, you know, reweight the, that open, I'm going to call it open participation, survey results, so that maybe we can even make the demographics match, we might even try to make some of those participation questions match. We can't always budge what's going on with the opinion. So, there is something different, and particularly when cities, I think, do open participation surveys. How people find out about it, is they're ones who are going to your website or interacting with you on social media or watching your cable TV channel, and that's how they find out about it. So, it's people who are already pretty engaged with the city. And so, that's the nice thing about the scientific survey, is we're getting people who aren't necessarily engaged with the necessarily engaged with the city. So those are some things I've seen when we've done those sort of coincidental, if that's the right word, coinciding.
Thank you. Councilmember Dibala.
Yeah, thank you very much. This is really interesting. Two questions. One, going back to the very beginning.
Okay.
Where you said the response rate from the number of mailings and then follow-ups. And in your experience, is that a good response rate and not good response rate?
It is a very typical response rate, and probably on the good side of typical. You know, we're finding response rates to surveys, everybody is finding this, are decreasing. So we're all looking at ways we can increase this. I go to some of the American Association of Public Opinion Research conferences, and this is obviously a hot topic. How can we increase response rate? Pew, if you're familiar with them, they do a lot of kind of social surveys. They're down, because they do a lot of their surveys by phone, although I think they're looking at some other now blended methods, they're down to about a 9% response rate. And what they're finding, they do some non-response studies, and they're saying with proper waiting and things like that, they're still getting, so that those are representative, although they're starting to see there's a few areas where maybe they're not quite as representative. So this 29% is pretty good. I would say for surveys of this type, we're seeing response rates now from like 18 to 35% on the high, maybe every once in a while 40%, but it tends to be more like 25 is maybe the average response right now.
Great, thanks. And then the other question, on your tables on discrimination, the one that gives the percentages of the things that folks have identified as where they experienced discrimination, the biggest category is other. Again, based on your experience, the surveys all over the place, any insights as to what is in other?
I don't really, and, you know, we didn't have a write-in response for that, which maybe we want to do, if you ask this question again. Tacoma Park is very brave for asking this question. This is not that common yet to be on community surveys like this, so I, that's why I don't have a lot of experience to be able to tell you, well, here's the kinds of things we've seen on other surveys. We've done it a couple times, but it's with workplaces. But that's a different kind of question than what has it been in the community. So I, I'm sorry, I don't have actually a good response for you.
Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Appreciate the time that you spent with me before the meeting to answer some of my questions. You hosted the pre-survey groups, your company did?
We helped them to be done, but we were not the facilitators. So we used a community organization for one of them, and then we used a group called Dragon Bridge helped to facilitate the other one that was with the Spanish speaking.
Okay. And some of the questions I have, you know, more stores and restaurants. Were you, are you able to elaborate on, you know, since you were able to sit down with people, can you give me more information? What does that look like?
Not off the top of my head. Sorry, we did, those were conducted last fall, and I probably should have read that report again, but I believe there is a report that maybe council has seen, and so that would have as much information as I have about that. But I could, I could, you know, email Jason to forward to you, once I have a chance to go look at that again.
Okay. And then the other, you know, I guess the negative point, safety in parks after dark. I don't think our parks are open after dark, so I don't, you know.
Tell that to the people who live near them. People who live near them, and I know it was.
They walk through them.
That was something we heard in the focus groups, too, from, with those two groups was this concern about safety in parks. And after dark was, you know, they did bring that up, and it may be because they're walking near them or through them, I don't know, but it was definitely raised.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Great. And I'm going to ask the deputy city manager, if when we posted the survey report, did we post the focus group report yet?
We did not post that. I'll put, when I update the community survey website, I'll make sure those reports are included on there.
Great. All right. See you, manager.
I guess one of the things I just want to add, I've worked with Erin now off and on for 10 years, I guess, but I was glad that she could work very well with the deputy city manager on this project. One of the things that I've learned over the years in this is that the free answers, the free written-in answers add an enormous amount of context to the documents. And so one of the things that we do as staff is, you know, we really, really read these results. We want to know what's working, what isn't working. Some of our performance evaluations are based on how do we, what are the results of the residents' survey, about how we're providing our services. But a lot of times you find out the real story by looking at the actual free-form answers. And so I do encourage people to go through and read them, because they, they can be very kind of broad statements, or they can say, you know, "I'm tired of the graffiti on the stop sign at X Street," you know, and so, and then those are things we can clean up. It also helps make it real that real people answered the survey, and that's useful. One of the things that we're intending on doing when we come back and talk with you about this is deciding how to follow up on, getting more into some of these topics that are raised, but we don't know the answers for, whether it's follow-up focus groups, community meetings on a subject, some other kind of mini survey or whatever, to try to go more into the details here and find some explanations. And I have talked with Councilmember Smith already about some of the things I'd like to do in meeting with residents in his ward. And I just want to let people know that, you know, we as staff take this really seriously. This is, you know, people just say, okay, people like you, or whatever. We look at every detail. How did something move up and down? It's also nice when, you know, when our trash guys get some nice plugs, to pat them on the back and say, you know, that work is recognized. And so I just appreciate that the council does do this survey. I think it's really important for us. I think we can, each time we've done a resident's survey, we have made tangible changes to improve our services. And so, thanks very much.
Thanks, Erin.
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Circe, do you have another?
I do. I actually want to piggyback off of the city manager's comments. I think surveys such as this are also helpful in stating the case to our colleagues at the county council level, as well as at the state level. The fact that a number of residents have said that, you know, our athletic fields and playgrounds are poor is indicative of the state of many of the county-owned playgrounds in the city. And so, you know, when we're making this case, it provides us with some hard evidence to engage others around the needs of the city. So doing these types of analyses are really beneficial, not just from the perspective of how can we reorganize and figure out how to fix things at the city level, but also what are some of the things that we need to elevate to the county and potentially the state level to address.
And I'd just like to piggyback on what Councilmember Circe said. You know, one of the things we've talked about doing our racial equity work, and we talked about the fact that we can look very carefully at the breakdown by race and ethnicity, is we talk about being a small city. Sometimes we don't have those data to really look at some of the policies and programs we want to move forward, and having up-to-date responses like these, broken down by ward, broken down by race and ethnicity, I think will really help us forward our work on racial equity. So I'm looking forward and digging into these numbers a little bit more. Terrific. All right, Erin, well, thank you very much. I'm sure we may come back to you with a few questions. We very much appreciate, and maybe I'll see you in Toronto at A4 this year.
Yes. Maybe.
Maybe. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next. They fixed your name tag.
They did. I am not Anthony, Antoni or Antonio, but not Anthony. So, why they did.
And our AV folks just went, they had to go around to switch something so that the presentation from this computer could work. So it's happening right now.
Terrific.
Okay. I'll go ahead and get into the intro. It doesn't involve the actual report. Good evening. I'm Tony Dwal, I'm the chief of police here in the city of Tacoma Park. I'm proud to bring you the annual report. I'm also proud to report a reduction of about 6.67% in violent crime in 2018 here in the city of Tacoma Park. We've also seen about a 30% decrease since 2014. I'm also proud to report that we've had no homicides or rapes in the city in 2018, as well as a 34% decrease in robberies, which is significant. The decrease in crime has a lot to do with our proactive efforts of our staff. We've made great strides to utilize emergent technologies to combat crime. Our crime analysts and officers are able to use real-time and historical crime data, not only within the city of Tacoma Park, but from what are in our neighboring jurisdictions. This utilization of crime data for resource deployment and cross-border communication and collaboration has been essential to the reduction of criminal activity in Tacoma Park and, I would say, in the surrounding areas as well. In 2018, we made significant changes to the structure of the police department to provide for a much more efficient operation of the agency, as well as a better service delivery to our residents. We developed a chain of command structure that better aligned the roles and responsibilities of staff. One of the structure changes involved the creation of the new deputy chief position. Earlier this evening, Mayor Stewart swore in our new deputy chief, Andrew Powell, who is in the audience. We're thrilled to have him. As any of you were here, that were here earlier, he has a resume that's about six pages. So we're delighted to have him, and we think he's going to be an integral part of the Tacoma Park senior leadership team. While I say that, I want to thank Captain Dan Friskorn for filling in in the interim. He did a phenomenal job. His institutional knowledge and ability to get stuff done is amazing, and he's a valued member of this agency, and I wanted to thank him for filling in for that brief period. We've been committed to our mission statement, to provide the highest quality of police services by promoting an environment where police department employees and the community work in partnership with the goal of improving the quality of life and expanding our multi-ethnic community, while at the same time, and this is really important, respecting the diversity of individual rights and dignity of all residents. It's important that while we do our job, we respect the residents of the city. As I said, this is integral to developing and maintaining strong relationships. Our goal is to continue to expand these relationships, especially with those within our community that may have mistrust in the police. We've been, we've been involved in numerous community outreach programs over the last year, including our homework club, our explorers program, our breakfast with Santa, which was a huge hit. There was one kid at our breakfast with Santa that literally came back to Santa about eight times. The kid just couldn't get away from Santa. So thank you to Officer John Golden, who played Santa. Actually, there is a real Santa, but he played Santa that night. We also had several other activities, Coffee with a Cop, which is really important. We had a lot of really good engagement with our residents at our Coffee with a Cop events. Our National Light Out, which the dunk tank was a hit, myself and city manager Suzie Ludo, we're dunked numerous times. So, just once, next year, you can come back for more. It was actually, it was actually very relieving. The water was cold and it was a hot day, so. We've done several other things, our Take 25 awareness for missing children, our annual tour drive for families in need in Tacoma Park, the Coat Drive for families in need, Safe Roads to School Initiative, we think is really important. We had no traffic-related fatalities in the city, and we think that has a lot to do with our participation in our Safe Roads, Safe Roads to School, as well as our outreach with the schools and our educational outreach that we do with pedestrian safety and also vehicular safety. We participated in the polar bear plunge, myself and several members of the agency, along with city manager Suzie Ludo did it this year, but we also did it in 2018. It was particularly cold this year. I don't even remember '18 because it was so cold in '19. It was just, but it was a great cause for Special Olympics, which is near and dear to me. I have a brother who has disabilities, and it's an extremely important program. We also participated in No Shave November to raise money for prostate cancer and research and awareness, and that was, that was an enjoyable time. I was able to grow a little bit, not that much, some more than others. So partnering with our stakeholders to build partnerships and trust is of the utmost importance to us. In 2018, we saw two of our senior command staff members retire. Captain Rick Bowers went on to became the chief of police for the city of Greenbelt Police Department. We wish him luck in that position. Captain Tyrone Collington retired to become the deputy chief of police for the town of Bladensburg. I think this speaks volumes to the quality of individuals we have within the police department, that we have one individual leaving to become a chief of police and another to be a deputy chief of police. So I think we have quality, quality employees here, and I commend both of them. With the retirements and the department restructuring, several promotions were made after a comprehensive competitive promotional process conducted by the International Chiefs of Police was conducted in 2018. We made several promotions to include promotions to the rank of lieutenant. Sergeant Michelle Holmes, Kurt Gilbert, Rich Sipley, and Rich Poole were all promoted to the rank of lieutenant. Corporals Cindy Conrad DePonte, Kyle Robeson, Joe Butler, and Greg Wolf were promoted to the rank of sergeant. And last but not least, private first class Jessica Garrison, Michael Godluskis, Victor Gluskoff, Kyle Hanlon, and Matthew Mazzati, and Eric Mueller were all promoted to the rank of corporal. Today, we had a training class for all the new supervisors. We felt it was very important, as they transitioned into their new positions, that they got training, and this was everything from how to conduct a use-of-force report to how to do Kronos and so on and so forth. We thought it was very important that we give them the skills and abilities, the skills and training that they need to do the job. So kudos to Acting Captain Sipley for putting on that training. It was, I got a lot of very positive feedback about that. We did have a somber moment in 2018. We lost one of our own. Detective Matt Barber passed away on May 24th, 2018. He was a valued member of our agency, and it hit a lot of us, all of us, really hard. But we are committed to supporting his family, his wife, and two daughters. They were with us at the polar bear plunge, and we will continue to make sure they're part of our family. In 2018, several of our operational general orders were updated to align with best practices to law enforcement. Most importantly was our pursuit policy, which when I came in, it was, I felt it was way too broad. We've restricted it tremendously to align with best practices. We continue to evaluate all of our general orders to ensure they're up to date and align with best policing practices. It's imperative that all of our policies and procedures are consistent with our goals and objectives. As an agency, we're committed to transparency and inclusiveness. We've continued to utilize social media and press releases to keep the community engaged and informed. Good, bad, or indifferent, you're going to hear about it from us. I think that's extremely important, that you can trust that we are going to bring you the information as it is. We're excited to bring you our annual report. I want to thank my executive assistant Kathy Plebey, who is in the Dominican Republic. I doubt that she's watching this, but thanks to her and all staff that contributed to the preparation of the 2018 annual report. With that, I'm open to questions, and I also have several staff members that are here to answer questions about their specific respective commands.
Terrific. Thank you very much, Chief, for that report. Turn it over to Councilmember Smith for the first question.
Chief, thank you for preparing this for us. I want to say I really appreciate your leadership in the department. We're moving in the right direction in all the critical areas. You know, the morale I've heard in the department is really good, and I think that's because of you. I like to see that you're wearing the white uniforms now. That's a nice change. I appreciate that.
This is just coincidental, it's our dress uniform that we wear. We had a promotional ceremony.
Chief, don't ruin it.
We do wear these on occasion, and it's important. We didn't have the white shirts previously, so we do wear them on occasion. Day-to-day operational uniform is still the black uniform, but on ceremonial occasions and a lot of times when we're going out and about and engaging with other agencies, we all will wear the white shirts. And they do look professional.
Yes. I mean, for command staff, I think you guys should be in the white uniforms. It just looks great.
Duly noted.
For Ward Five, the data was very good. Can you recommend some ways that that story can be told to the residents? Because some residents in the survey said they wanted to see more activity of the police department in Ward Five, but, I mean, you know, if you look at the data, you guys are doing a bang-up job. So, I mean, how can we bridge that disconnect?
You know, I think we can always do a better job. I think one of the perfect examples is the diversity inclusiveness in the report overall. And I think it was about 9% of people experienced some type of discrimination, but we still can do better. We want to get that down to 0%. So I think the more we engage our constituents, not only in Ward Five, but all of our wards, we're trying to do, spread out our Coffee with a Cop to every section of the city. I think that's important, but the more we can just think. But the more we can just engage folks on every level, I think is extremely important. I think it was one of the things that I really got a lot out of last year, my first year as chief, was just engaging people in living rooms, whether it was eight people, 50 people, 60 people. So, I think it's important for people to see us. So, the more we can have either community events, Coffee with a Cop, Breakfast with Santa, or just individual meetings in someone's living room. So, I know that we did a lot in various wards. I think I was in Sidney DeBala's ward at least 10 times, three times? I thought it was more. It seemed like 10 times. But, you know, we're open. Like I said, last year, I will come out for five, 10, 20, 400. I'm willing to come out, and my staff is willing to come out. I know we have a meeting, I think, tomorrow over the Hodges Heights increase in thefts. I think it's important that when things happen, we're there and we're having that discussion. So, I think what we're doing is working. I just think more of it is probably what we need to have some inroads. We looked at the numbers in Ward Five, and for us, the numbers in Ward Five were lower than they were in other wards, and we were trying to wrap our hands around why they were lower there, because we felt we've consistently, as you said earlier, been engaged in that ward. So, I'm not quite sure why. You know, all of our, most of our wards border another jurisdiction, and we're thinking, well, maybe it was experience with another agency, or, you know, I don't know what it is, but we're going to look at that, you know, the survey that was just conducted and try to figure out what we can do better as far as our customer delivery. But I just say, I think engaging people at every level is the most important thing.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Absolutely.
Councilwoman DeBala?
Yes. Well, thank you for coming to Ward Two for so many times, you and your staff. It's been very good. I really appreciate the community-based policing that you've all been moving towards. And I have three questions. I'll just put them out there, and you can take them. One is moving even more towards ward or beat assignments. How are you on that? One is school bus safety, which we've talked about a bunch and came up again this morning in Ward Two. And third, I'd like you to say a little bit about the victim assistance coordinator. I'm not sure people know there is one, not everybody.
Okay. I'll touch on them, I guess, in order in which they represented. You know, each of our officers are assigned a beat, and they're engaged in their specific beat. That allows them to know the norms within the beat, know the people that come and go, and I think that's extremely important. I think it's important that we know the people within our beat that have mental disabilities, the people within the beat that live by themselves, maybe elderly. So, we understand the importance of assigning officers to a specific beat, not moving them around, and that's what we practice. I think that's extremely important. The second question about school bus safety, you know, it's very important to me. I have three young kids that take the bus, and it's very important that, you know, some of our bus stops, the one you spoke of on Ethan Allen right before, New Hampshire, is not in the best area, and I think we need to engage the school board. I was going to recommend that you join us for our next principals' meeting that we have on a monthly basis to discuss that and get the principals on board with coming up with a solution, because Lord forbid that something happened to one of our children because someone passes a school bus. I will tell you this, when we get complaints, we are very robust in assigning officers to be proactive and educate the public first about certain things.
Yes, I meant to thank you for your responsiveness in general on this.
I appreciate it, but, you know, there are certain violations that education starts with citations, and if you pass a school bus, that should start with a citation. That's just of a serious level that, you know, that could hurt kids. Kids aren't aware of their surroundings as much as they should be, and they feel safe crossing when a bus is stopped, and sometimes they're not as aware as they should be. But I think that it's very important to, and a lot of these roadways that we're dealing with are not local roadways, they're state roadways. So, I think there's ways that we can improve the infrastructure and maybe change bus stop locations, but I think the first step is, and I'll talk to you offline about coming to our next principals' meeting. And the third thing you brought up is our victim witness coordinator. Diana Dean is fantastic in what she does. I think what's very important for us and what separates us from other agencies is how we follow up with victims of crime. It's very important that we continue that dialogue when someone has experienced, you know, a criminal event. Diana Dean is very robust in how she reaches out and continues to offer services to our community. I can't tell you how many times I've heard from victims that appreciate her following up and offering assistance. So, it's an integral part of our police department. You know, one of the things that I stressed when I came here was being responsive, and sometimes people don't want necessarily for you to solve anything, they just want to be heard. They just want to know that we are looking into their situation, and their situation is important. So, it's something we're going to continue to do and try to expand on somewhat.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for the report tonight. It's heartwarming to see the numbers and the statistics, but I especially appreciate the improvements that I've seen in the integrity and the department and the leadership that you're providing to the department. I think we're really headed in the right direction. Anecdotally, the community members that I hear back from are commenting on the improvements and the police-public interactions, and so that's really appreciated from my perspective. I have one concern, though, with the report, and I've been on the city council now for a number of years, as you know, and this is the first year that Ward Four is not have the lowest major crimes. It always brings humor for me to talk about the fact that we were the lowest, and now that we're not, but on the same side, it is concerning, right, to see the numbers either grow or not reduce as quickly as Ward Five did this year. So, you know, if there's any, anything we can do to address especially, like I say, the Part One crimes in Ward Four, or anything we can do to help you with that, I appreciate your feedback.
I'm glad you bring that up, because partnership with the community is extremely important. We solve a lot of our crimes via input from residents. Our Community Cam program has solved multiple crimes for us. I think that if you see something, say something is paramount. It's very important that we have our residents engaged. If something looks suspicious, call us. You know, I can't speak enough about people engaging and helping us, and it's a partnership. So, I think the more people we can get involved in our Community Cam program, the more people we can involve, get involved in understanding their community and their neighbors, so they know what's out of the norm. If you know your neighbor and you know your neighbors, you're less likely, you're more likely to know somebody that's out of sorts, that, you know, doesn't fit in the neighborhood. You know, a lot of people are hesitant to call the police if they see something really suspicious, because they don't want to be labeled as racial profiling. Suspicious is suspicious. I mean, if you're calling just because someone is a certain race, yeah, it's profiling. But if you're calling because you see someone looking into cars with a flashlight late at night, yeah, that's suspicious. So, I want to encourage people, if it's suspicious, call us, or call us and let us figure out whether or not it's suspicious. You know, as far as various wards, you know, we put resources, you know, where we're having issues, and I can assure you that if there are some issues in your ward, we're already on top of it.
And I didn't mean to try to inject any political decision, you know, aspect into decisions.
By no means. I do want to say one thing. A lot has been said about what I've done. It's not about me, it's about the police department. It's about the individuals in the police department, the people sitting there and the people watching, and the people out working the road right now, or the people making these inroads.
But the honeymoon's over, so next year, it will be about you.
Duly noted.
Councilwoman Cersei?
Thank you so much for all of the hard work that you and the officers are doing to protect the city. Ward Six is still on top, and that's not a good thing. And one thing that has consistently been a bit of an issue is policing from the perspective of commercial areas and crime that happens from, like, shoplifting, larceny, those kinds of things. Are there or could there be some efforts underway to really engage the businesses more? You know, for the council, one of our priorities is economic development. We attended the meeting that OTBA had with its businesses to try to talk about some of the things that they're experiencing. Definitely could include, have the Crossroads engage with you to really try to get down to the root of what are some of the challenges that the business owners are experiencing in terms of things like shoplifting and that are happening in their stores. Have you already started to engage them more? Is there some sort of action plan in place? Because we've kind of seen these numbers be high for this reason for a couple of years now, so it would be nice if we had some strategy in place to really try to work with businesses a little bit more.
I'm glad you bring that up. It's a priority of ours. I've actually walked on foot to several businesses, as well as other staff members have. We're working with Kaylee from the Crossroads. We submitted a matching proposal for them to match funds, the city to match funds for cameras within that area. It's a difficult situation, because there are certain groups that target the Crossroads, and it's difficult at times to catch them, but I think that it's very important that we are engaged with the businesses. A lot of times, they are, I don't want to say ignored, but they haven't gotten the attention, as you said, that they should. It's a priority of mine to make sure that we are engaging them as far as posting of suspicious subjects. What we did is we went around to all of the businesses, and we, any business that had video footage, that had thefts and were willing to give us the footage, we were posting it at other businesses. So, if people walked in those other businesses, they would automatically see the suspicious person and be able to call us. We also were encouraging them to call us. A lot of times, they would not call us, just because they were, okay, well, it's a $10 item, a $15 item, but that adds up. So, we want to be notified, and that's something that we've encouraged them to do. So, it's a work in progress, but I'm open to meeting with them or putting something together. It's one of the tasks that I'm going to task Deputy Chief Powell with, so he'll probably be spearheading that.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. Thank you for the report, and I want to reiterate the thanks to you and the rest of the department for your leadership and for the work that you all have done to make improvements in the department over the past year. I have a couple of questions. One of them is, I know you've been working on developing some MOUs with the neighboring jurisdictions, and that's a particular issue along Eastern Avenue, working with DC. So, I'm wondering if you can provide some information about progress on that and what sort of hope we have on that work.
I sure can. You know, we had a recent incident that really brought this to light. It was an incident, a robbery that occurred on Kansas at Eastern. Originally, it was dispatched as occurring in the District of Columbia. The District of Columbia officers responded. They met with the victim. The victim said, gave a description and said they ran that way. Currently, DC officers don't have the authority, absent fresh pursuit. They see the suspect, and they're able to chase them. So, that victim, we lost real time for the officers not being able to circulate the area for the suspect. So, I'm less concerned about having an MOU. We already have an MOU with the Montgomery County Police. I'm less concerned about having an MOU with Prince George's County, because we already have law enforcement jurisdiction in the state of Maryland. In that particular case, our officers would be able to traverse over into Prince George's County and look for the suspect. I'm more concerned with having an MOU with the District of Columbia. We've had a couple incidents that started in Montgomery County and ended up in the District of Columbia. One was an accidental canine bite, and the other one was a shooting that was, an officer was involved in last July. So, I think it's extremely important. We have a draft of the MOU that was put forth at the District of Columbia about two years ago. It's my goal, based on the publicity that we've seen from these recent incidents, to be able to move forward an MOU with the District of Columbia, so we can have law enforcement jurisdiction if something happens on the line, and vice versa, they can have law enforcement jurisdiction if something happens that happens in the District of Columbia that traverses over into the city of Tacoma Park. I am surprised that the neighboring jurisdictions, Montgomery County, Prince George's County, Nora, Tacoma Park, have memorandums of understanding with the District of Columbia. So, I think it's a, it's not just a Tacoma Park issue, it's also Montgomery County and Prince George's County issue, but like I said, I think that our recent events have put this on the forefront, and it's my goal to get that done.
Thank you. Thank you. I think that's really important. The other thing that we talked about in regards to that was seeing if we could put out an alert to residents with information about how they could sign up to receive alerts from neighboring jurisdictions, so from Prince George's, DC, Montgomery County. A lot of people I know in the community get the alerts from Tacoma Park Police, but if something's happening just across the street, they might not even know about it, or they might not think to sign up for alerts from DC, for example. So, if there's an opportunity to just get that information out with, you know, a summary of how to sign up for some of those other alert systems, I think that'd be really useful.
Duly noted. I will have Kathy put that out. I will say that we are very robust in how we put out information, so the expectations that you get from our agency, you might not get from other agencies. So, if they expect to get the same timely response, they may not get it from other jurisdictions.
And then the other thing I wanted to mention was, there's not a lot of information here about traffic stops and traffic areas in the city where crashes happen, and I'm not sure that that necessarily belongs in the annual report in a lot of detail, but I do think that's something that we would benefit from analyzing a little more as we start to look at our transportation planning and really identifying where different places in the city are that have more of these concerns. So, I'd love it if we could begin to work on some of that and see how, maybe in a different format, we could have a presentation to discuss some of those things.
Absolutely. That's data that we have collected, and no surprise, the vast majority of accidents are on the New Hampshire corridor and also on East West Highway. But no, we'd be more than willing to put together a presentation regarding just overall traffic safety and some of the improvements we've recommended and some of the improvements we want to make, and also the discussion on Vision Zero, kind of what we're already doing in line with Vision Zero, because I think that's important to understand, that we are already implementing a lot of the things that are in the various Vision Zero programs. So, that makes absolute sense to me.
Great. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief. Great presentation, and thanks for all your work and the departments as well. Just wanted to ask you a few things. You mentioned the Hodges Heights meeting that's coming up, and that's in response to a recent rash of car break-ins, and I'm wondering, does that fall under, would that be larceny in your table here?
Yes.
Right? And so, what's, have you noticed that specific type of larceny is an increasing kind of thing? I mean, it certainly has been in some neighborhoods, I'm aware, but I wonder whether that's a broader thing.
It's a crime of opportunity, and a lot of times, when you have people that leave their vehicles open, we'll see a lot of these. So, I think it's important that we come out tomorrow and educate people on how they can prevent this. I wouldn't say that there's an increase. I just say we're aware. They seem to be in trends, like if people find an area that they think is a soft target, per se. So, like I say, I think it's very important and what's brought to light that we really need to provide a lot more education on what to do to prevent these type of incidents occurring. We also, a lot of these are underreported. A lot of times, people will not report these. If someone steals, you know, a scarf for 50 cents, or, it's important that we know this information, so we can deploy resources, and I can't stress enough that people.
I did want to ask you about that, because, I mean, I think over the years, and it happened to me years and years ago, and I think the tendency is someone ruffles through or rifles through, whatever the word is, your glove compartment, and they don't take anything. I think a lot of us just sort of figure, okay, next time, I'll make sure I lock it. So, you want to be called.
There may be valuable intelligence. We may have 17 different thefts in that area. I'm just throwing out a number. So, that particular incident, there may be video, there may be a witness. So, it's important for intelligence purposes for everyone to call us and notify us, so we can, we can at least know how many incidents, because a lot of times when they're underreported, we won't know that there is a problem until, you know, we're way into it.
Yep. Just a few other things. I know we have other topics to turn to. In the survey that we talked about earlier, and the city manager mentioned the written-out comments, too, a big one that rolled through that was the visibility issue, and I know you're out there doing a lot, but that struck me as something that people really want to see, and I'm sure you're doing a lot of it, but if there's ways to do more of that, I would certainly recommend that. You mentioned, I just saw on page 18, and maybe this is just a typo or something. You mentioned, I just saw on page 18, and maybe this is just a typo or something, but I'll ask you anyway, in the table, which is the Wardwood table, and says there were two rapes. You said earlier there weren't any, so I assume that might have just been picked up from the column down below. Is that...
Page 18?
Yeah.
Maybe my numbers might not be corresponding with yours. I have automated speed traffic on my page 18.
Oh, it's UCR Part 1 arrest in the city of Tacoma Park by Wardon by crime.
That must have been a typo.
Okay, so I figured. On page 38, you have, that's probably the wrong page, you have the closure rates. What's a good percentage of closure? Maybe it's not page 38 for you.
Our investigative, our CID commanders here, I'll let him speak directly to that, because he can speak directly to our...
Page 40.
Page 40 of...
63% closure rate. How does that measure up to other places?
It's through one page.
Lieutenant Paul's gonna, is the CID commander.
Thank you. I think nationwide, the closure rate is, it varies from jurisdiction, but overall, it's in the 45% to 55% closure rates. So we're much higher than the average closure rate. And a lot of that has to do, I think, with obviously the diligence of the investigators and the police officers that are assisting with our detective bureau. But it's also, some of our crimes that we have, runaways, missing persons, cases where the criminals are known to the victims, those are very, very easy to close, obviously. So that increases the closure rate with the cooperation of our victims.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple other quick things. So the ERT, the Emergency Response Team, how useful you find that? Because a lot of people ask me about that and say, is that something we need? And I'm just curious what the...
I think it's definitely proven useful, and we're looking to improve its operation. We're going to do a comprehensive review of ERT to see what works and what doesn't work. But there's a value to having an ERT team, but we want to make sure that we do our due diligence to make sure that we're doing the right thing. And just same as all of our operational, you know, general orders, we want to make sure that we're in line with best practices.
Last thing. You had a discussion of complaints against officers or the investigations, and I don't think it explained, I realize you can't use their names, but what were the sanctions against them, or the punishments, or whatever it is? So is that data that can be shared separately?
Law enforcement officer bill of rights does not allow us to share the disciplinary action against a particular officer.
Right, not particularly, but could you just say, you know, three of them involved demotion, or, you know, warning, or something like that?
I will tell you this, we are looking at alternative dispute mediation here in the city of Tacoma Park, which I think will really open up the transparency of the police department. It involves the officer and the resident who's complaining, having a dialogue through alternative dispute mediation. And I think that will, a lot of times, someone complains, and they never know the outcome, just like you're asking. Well, okay, there were sustained charges, but we don't know what the punishment was against the officer. And a lot of times, they don't leave with resolution. And I think that having the ability to have an officer and the person who complained have a dialogue, and there might be a better understanding on both parts. So based on what we're required to do statutorily, we still are trying to be more transparent in what we do, and I think the alternative dispute mediation is really going to help us in that regard.
Good, thank you, appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Siemens, do you have another question?
Yes, thank you. I broke it up into two pieces here. I know, one of the things I didn't see in the report, and forgive me if I missed it, but I didn't hear you talk about, was the, are we fully staffed at this point? I know that being, you know, having vacancies has been a problem in the past, and I wonder where we stand now, and what steps you're taking for officer retention and making sure that we are fully staffed.
That's a great question. We currently have a sworn allotment of 43. We are at 42 with the officers in the academy. We've hired seven officers in the last year. And I told you last year, my motto was quality, not quantity, and all of these people are quality individuals. The one thing we're still striving to do is attract females. That's really important, and that's a big goal of mine. But right now, we have, like I say, one sworn vacancy that we're looking to fill. We have several qualified people that have applied. We've taken a look at our recruiting process, and we've looked at the standards and adjusted them to not eliminate a disproportionate number of qualified candidates. We've also looked to mainstream the recruiting to combine the physical agility with the written portion, so we can expedite the process. A lot of times, you lose really good candidates to other jurisdictions if you do not expeditiously get them hired. We also have one dispatcher vacancy. But, you know, my goal is to make sure that we're fully staffed with quality people. I would rather work with less people if they're not quality people. And everyone that we've hired is...
I appreciate that. And I know in the past, we've suffered some from that lack of expeditiously going through the process, that people have just gone to other jurisdictions because they were quicker. The topic you were just talking about with Mr. Kovar, regarding the law enforcement officer bill of rights, I understand that you have on our staff now an expert in law enforcement officer bill of rights. And I would encourage us to have a discussion at some point about what changes in that law that we might advocate for, that would give us maybe a better way to deal with problems. I understand it's not an easy issue, because there are certainly, there is a need for protecting the officers, but there is also a need for transparency, as you said. So trying to strike maybe a little bit different balance than where we are right now. I think Maryland's law enforcement officers' bill of rights is about one of the most non-transparent in the country. So I'd be interested in talking with you, and maybe this council could help to advocate for some changes.
I can tell you, there's no one better in the state of Maryland to present on the law enforcement officers' bill of rights than Andy Powell. So I don't know if the overall, if the council as a whole, or even our residents, would benefit from a presentation from him. I guarantee you'd walk away understanding a very complicated bill, complicated law. So I think that for just the benefit of the council and the benefit of the community...
I'm excited to have him on board for that, if no other reason.
Well, there are several other reasons to be excited, I can assure you, but...
So based on the kind words that were said about our new deputy chief, you two can now text about law enforcement bill last night. I just had a couple of follow-ups, Chief. I think everyone, you, I feel like everyone should read this report, because even the last 45 minutes that we talked, you are just sort of giving us the highlights. One of the things, if you could just touch upon the changes you've made in the chief's advisory group as well, because I know there are changes there.
Absolutely. To be candid, the chief's advisory board was not a very productive board, for various reasons that I will not get into. I felt it was very important, and one of the first things I did was to reengage the residents that were on the chief's advisory board, to understand what the issues were with the previous board, and clear the air with that. We had several that still wanted to remain on the board. We have several new members. We have some of our chief's advisory board here. Elizabeth Wallace is in the audience. You know, I felt it was very important that this board be a productive, a productive board that gave me and the police department good advice. So what we did is we basically revamped the board, and it was a board that, as I said last year, it's not meant to hear me talk. I'm there to hear them talk. I'm there for them to bring me information about what their concerns are, and about what their neighbors' concerns are, and also to bring back information from the police department. It's been very beneficial. Members of the police department have been able to, our member of the chief's advisory board have been able to dispel a lot of myths around certain situations. They call me, and they trust that they know that they're going to get the facts from me, and they're able to disseminate that information out. But it's extremely valuable. I can tell you, we've had people that, the alternative dispute mediation, we had experts on that subject. We've had experts on different use of force things that have been extremely beneficial to us. So there's an extreme value of the chief's advisory board. We currently have, I think, 13 members, and we're looking to, we're still looking to find a member in the 16 to 20 range, because we feel like that's really important to have somebody. Because as many of the chief's advisory board members said, you know, we need to be having people in the room that are going to be probably the most affected by the decisions that we make. And a lot of times, you know, people in that range, at age range 16 to 20, not only have mistrust of the police, but also may be disproportionately affected by the policies that we enact. So that's one thing that we're working on. That's the one thing that I would say I still want to see happen with the chief's advisory board. But like, there's a wealth of knowledge here in the city, and I think people really want to be heard, and I think people really want to have input into the police department operations, and we're open to that.
Great. And thinking about the future, you've just mentioned what you're doing on the chief's advisory board. What else does the next year bring, do you think, for the police department?
You know, we've made a lot of changes structurally. We've made a lot of changes just operationally and focus-wise. I think the most important thing right now is to continue what we're doing, but also build up our employees. I really want to stress to our employees, training, both inside training and also formal education. The city pays for college. There's no excuse for anyone that wants to go back to college and not to do so. So I'm really stressing opportunities like getting formal education, also some executive schools. We were fortunate enough last year to send two of our captains to the Northwest Executive School. Captain Friskorn and Captain, then Captain Tyrone Collington attended that. I think that's really important. Not only does it bring back progressive ideas of policing back to the city, it also improves our employees and brings that value back. And there's also networking that's accomplished by that. I think what I really want to see this year is a much larger impact on those who have mistrust in the police. I think we've had a lot of inroads with groups that trust the police. I think we still have work to do with groups that do not trust the police. So we're going to look at ways to expand our outreach. Aside from coffee with a cop that reaches a certain demographics, we need to find ways, whether or not it's an engaged basketball game, whether or not it's, you know, I don't know what it is at this point. I think what we're really going to benefit from, and I didn't mention earlier, is filling the cop's position. We haven't filled that yet. We're going to be filling that in the near future. And having someone solely focused on community outreach activity will at least allow us to get some inroads. I think we have had some inroads with our, working with our principals at all the schools within Tacoma Park. I think that is a way, we've attended numerous events at Tacoma Park Middle School, the elementary school, as well as the middle school. I think cultivating those relationships is important, but I really want to continue the upward trend of just treating everyone equal and having a respectful and professional police department.
Great, thank you. And I know you give credit to your whole department for everything that's happening, but I have to say, Chief, having sat on this council, having you here, and hearing you talk about the direction that you're taking the police department, is, I join my colleague, Councilmember Siemens, in just saying thank you very much for all you're doing and the leadership you're showing.
Appreciate it.
Good to see you all.
Yeah. Chief, you know that Washington Methodist Hospital is leaving this year. Have you had any discussions of what type of security, armed security, that they're going to leave on that campus, and how that is going to impact your officers?
Yeah, we actually, there's kind of twofold. We're looking at when they move, how that operation is going to go about, and we've already met with them, and we're already working intimately on how to do that. We're also meeting next week, I think, on the 12th, with city staff, police department staff, to understand how we're going to move forward with that property. So that's going to take place, I believe, next week. But it's definitely on our radar, and important that we have a, an understanding of what that space is going to look like from a law enforcement perspective, what security is going to be there. I mean, there's going to be a significant amount of that building that is vacant. So it's definitely on our radar.
Okay, good. You know, I mean, maybe the possibility is to have the hospital compensate us, you know, because that...
You're going to come to the meeting, because I'm thinking the same thing.
Sure, I mean, it's going to fit into my schedule, because, you know, this is going to be a major undertaking for you guys. You know, so whatever we can do, I don't, I'm not confident that the hospital, since they are building this brand-new, $350 million facility, is going to put the resources required to maintain some type of presence on this campus, some type of security presence.
I agree. And having a vacant building of that size is extremely problematic from a law enforcement perspective. So if there is not some type of onsite security yet, we would most likely ask for some type of compensation, because we don't have enough manpower to, you know, provide the security that would be required at that type of facility if it's vacant for a long period of time.
Right, okay, thank you.
Sure.
See you, Madge.
Thank you. One of the things that you started out with was the reduction of crimes in calendar year 2018. And I just want to make the point that a reduction of crimes does not necessarily mean the police department did something better. It can be a demographic thing. It could be that some folks who've been bad have been locked up, and they come back. So it's something we have to watch over time. You know, the trend is to, you take credit when it's lower, and it's somebody else's fault when it goes up. And I, you know, I don't want to play that. What I do think is more important is the quality of people's feelings about the police department and the interactions. And that's something I've seen real changes with in the past year. And I'm very pleased about that. The officers are excited about it, in my view. And just as you have the meetings with the principals, the other thing that's really nice is that the other staff in the other departments feel very comfortable approaching the police department. So our economic development coordinator reaches out to the chief of police to talk about how do we work with the businesses? I mean, these are things that hit some of the topics that you've been talking about and expressed concern about, that I think wasn't as easy before. So it's really one of the things that I see, you know, as we look at the crime rates and the very careful work that we do with the crime analyst work helps deal with that. But the real fact of the matter is, how's that felt in the ground? And right now, it's really good. Seeing it come improve, I think the training part is really important to, we have not had on some of the departments really good supervisory training. There's lots of police training, but just in terms of supervisory training, and that's, I'm glad to see that that's being adopted as a larger part of the responsibilities. I think that will be something positive for calendar year 2019, when we get to that report. So I want to thank you and the staff. It's great. I enjoy them all the time. Thank you.
Great. I'm just going to do a final plug for next year for the Community Police Academy. Councilwoman Kostick, and I did it last year. I know it's going strong this year. It really, for folks who want to understand our police department and the work that you're doing, it's a really very helpful...
One more person Jesse is currently in.
Yes, that's right. Jesse's doing it now. So, yeah, very good.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you all for coming this evening, and we look forward to continuing the work together.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item is our voting session, and so we'll ask, we have a consent agenda tonight that has a resolution adopting the amended youth council charter, a resolution authorizing closure of Anne Street for the Tacoma Langley CDA Spring Fest, a resolution for the appointments to the Arts and Humanities Committee, and to the Emergency Preparedness Committee, and the Ethics Commission. Are there any public comments on any of those items this evening? Seeing no public comments, would someone like to move the consent agenda?
Move.
Councilmember Siemens, move. Do I have a second?
Second.
Councilwoman Seersey, second. No ordinances. All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right. Next, now, we'll move to other public comments. So if anyone has any public comments, those can happen now.
I just want to point out, we're two minutes over. That's the most accurate there's ever been. That's great.
I'm trying.
Very good presentations, really.
I need to mention that, I think the 30-second timer, I was told, isn't working there.
Oh, go for it.
So it's not going to beep when you have 30 seconds. Just want to give you that... Just want to give you that, everyone, a heads up.
I like that and I particularly like the idea about finding out how many people watch on TV like I often do. Here we go. Good evening, Stephen Kern, Ward Two. I'd like to address the waivers introduced by NDC in the justification statement submitted to the county, starting with setbacks. On page, on seven, NDC writes, "The building is proposed to be set back zero-point-eight-eight feet, a foot, from the southern property line. Although this setback does not meet code, applicant requests a waiver." Why? "Applicant controls the abutting property and the property itself is, quote, 'a relatively narrow site.'" Okay. "Does the city support or object to this waiver?" The next category is parking and it comes in two parts. Part one, applicant is seeking a waiver of twelve spaces because, quote, "overflow parking in nearby neighborhoods will not be an issue." Really? How can we be so sure? Quote, "It will be adequately served by mass transit as it's only located zero-point-seven miles from Metro Rail." Hmm. Parking two, applicant requests a waiver to allow forty-five fewer parking spaces than required because, quote, "trends in the automotive industry indicate a move away from individual-owned human-operated vehicles." Hmm. According to NDC, metro and self-driving cars will eliminate the need for fifty-seven spaces. Wow. Do you support this waiver to eliminate parking or do you object? The final waiver category regards the lay-by. Quote, "It's unclear whether this space," meaning the lay-by lane, "will meet the requirements of the code. Therefore, to the extent that the lay-by does not meet the requirements, the applicant requests a waiver of the loading requirements." I see this as kind of a pre-waiver waiver. To do whatever NDC wants to do, one is too late for objection. What about you? What do you think? Do you support or oppose this pre-waiver waiver? Looking at the four waivers as a whole, are you planning on addressing these issues before the March nineteen DRC meeting and/or sharing your positions with county regulators at the meeting? If you plan to wait to address these issues until decisions have been made on the county level, are you prepared to countermand the county should the county, for instance, approve the waiver to eliminate fifty-seven parking spaces? In fact, is it fair to wonder if the city has a conflict of interest here? Why would you object to any of the waivers when it would make it harder for NDC, your de facto development partner, to achieve your common goal? I encourage you to share your positions with us, with NDC, with the county before the meeting on the nineteenth. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening?
Good evening. Nadine Block, Ward Three, and I'm speaking on behalf of Community Vision for Tacoma. All of us, the city council and the public, are now faced with a thick file of new junction development documents describing a plan we've never seen before it was submitted to the county. Community Vision for Tacoma has analyzed these documents and compiled a list of important things to know about this plan, which was submitted in the city's name. On the subject of traffic, did you know that your plan finds traffic delays in the junction already to be excessive? That your plan adds yet more traffic to existing delays at the junction? That the plan adds a parking garage driveway directly into the middle of the junction? Your plan's garage driveway, according to county engineers, is a significant safety hazard due to inadequate site distance. Your plan's garage driveway will therefore be a hazard to pedestrians, bicyclists, garage users, and general traffic. Your plan introduces a lay-by delivery lane into the middle of the junction. Your plan requires delivery trucks to enter the lay-by through the Firehouse Light and exit through the Carroll and Ethan Allen Light. Your plan contains no plan for routing these delivery trucks through the city. Your plan contains no plan for waiting trucks when the lay-by is full. Your plan finds that only, the only feasible way to remediate some of these issues is a major reconfiguration of the junction roadways. Your plan recommends a reconfiguration that the city has not approved. And your plan's reconfiguration conflicts with the purpose of the S.H.A.'s forthcoming vision study by predetermining its outcome. On pedestrian safety, under current conditions, your plan takes away the Grant Avenue crosswalk for which we have fought for years. Your plan takes away the pedestrian all-red phase for which we've fought for, for years. Your plan provides no pedestrian crossing in the long block between the Firehouse and the Co-op. Your plan provides no pedestrian drop-off area for visitors to the site. With major reconfiguration, your plan also destroys B.Y. Morrison Park, replacing it with a traffic island and a bus stop. Your plan also recommends a bypass lane, known to be dangerous to pedestrians. And your plan requires pedestrians to cross Carroll Ave. in two phases, split by a traffic island and crossing the bypass lane. Bicycles, your plan proposes a lay-by lane cutting right through the bicycle lane, approved in the county's Bike Master Plan. Your plan makes no provision for bike-share stations. And your plan provides only a handful of bike parking spaces above ground. For public transit, your plan removes the bus stop in front of the City Lot and places it, who knows where? Your plan removes the bus stop on Ethan Allen at B.Y. Morrison Park and places it on the traffic island where riders must complete with pedestrians. Do you know if your plan favors pedestrians, cyclists, or public transport over cars in any respect? And this letter will be continued by the next speaker.
Hi, my name is Karen Elrich. My home is in Ward Five. So, public space, did you know your plan provides far less usable public space than the two-thousand-seven-hundred square feet that NDC promises? Your plan counts sidewalks as public space. Your plan counts unusable buffer zone next to lay-by and Carroll Avenue as public space. Your plan provides nearly as much private outdoor space on the balcony and roof as public outdoor space. Your plan provides less usable public space than the one-thousand-two-hundred-and-seventy square feet reserved for the restaurant's kitchen. Your plan completely destroys B.Y. Morrison Park with no increase in public space. Your plan and your city manager proposes to remove numerous trees from the site without application of the city tree ordinance. Your plan proposes no landscape for the rear of the building outside the building envelope despite what the city manager keeps saying. Stormwater management and environmental issues, your plan is designed to treat less than half the probable stormwater capacity for the site. Your plan does not consider whether existing downstream storm drain capacity can handle the runoff from your new building. Your plan calls for disturbing slopes that are so steep they fall outside regular county standards for forest management. Your plan lacks any analysis of soils on the site and fails to stabilize the steep slopes it will disturb. Your plan provides less usable public space than the two-thousand-seven-hundred that NDC promises and completely destroys Morrison Park. Just to change things up a bit, did you know that your plan's tiny public space is bordered by the unsafe driveway, Carroll Avenue, and the exhaust end of idling trucks in the lay-by lane, right under the watchful eyes of the private balcony above? All of these facts are the product of the plan NDC submitted to the, in the city's name. None of them should be permitted and all of them can be stopped or improved if only this council shows the will. I'm really disappointed that our council did not take this opportunity to increase our community space or perhaps even find a way to get rid of the lay-by.
Good evening. Japplin Moore, I'm sorry, Japplin Moore, Ward Two, Aspen Avenue. I'd like to address just one piece of the development application, which I think indicative of the whole frustrating process. As on previous occasions, the city manager stated in her comments to the council last week that, once construction in the junction is completed, in addition to the trees that are retained on the site, there will be new trees planted. There will be new trees planted. Well, I've provided each of you with a two-page document. The first page is the forest conservation plan, which identifies all the trees to be cut down. The second page is the landscape and lighting plan. As I've highlighted on the page, it shows that the bulk of the rear of the property will be a forest conservation area with no proposed landscape. Pardon me if I'm misreading something, but I'm sure people who live in the shadow of the building on the Columbia Avenue side, which will rise about fifty-five feet above grade, would appreciate binding confirmation from NDC that there will, in fact, be landscaping to mitigate the replacement of a forest with what amounts to a five-story wall. And on a different topic, the police chief brought up bus stop relocation near Ethan Allen and New Hampshire. You don't have to go to the school principals. As a twenty-eight-year MCPS employee, all you have to do is present your case to the MCPS Transportation Depot that handles that route. They will take care of it for you. Thank you. Enjoy the maps.
Any other public comments tonight?
My name is Wayne Sherwood. I live on Grant Avenue and thank you to the city council for having this presentation tonight on the resident survey. I thought it was a terrific presentation and the document itself, as I understand it, is over a hundred and fifty pages long. And it was highly complimentary to the city from a lot of different perspectives and the resident opinions. And the city council has said it's interested in the racial equity aspects of it. I think in order to really get a good indication of these details, you have to read the report down into the details. And so I'm really speaking not to you because I know you all will read it, but to those who are at home, maybe watching this presentation, if you are interested in racial equity issues, I really encourage you to take a careful look at the appendix tables because there are significant differences from one ward to another or one group to another. Councilmember Smith asked some questions about Ward Five and certainly others. There's this question of racial discrimination and there's this big category called "other", I think twenty-four percent. We need to know more about that. And so what I'm suggesting is, you know, we have here, in the city council, night after night, we have large numbers of people who testify, rightly so, about their concerns, whether it's Tacoma Junction or if it's street lighting or if it's speed bumps in front of your house or if it's the height of the lighting that's going to be replacing. And the people in Tacoma Park that are really concerned about racial equity issues, I really encourage you to read the report carefully and come down here and testify because these things are not just a matter of numbers, they're a matter of hundreds of pages of numbers. They have to keep on saying over and over again that these represent Tacoma Park community values and we feel strongly about them, just as people feel strongly about the junction or about street lighting or crime. So please, read it and, and come down here the next time, as soon as you can, and make your voice heard. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sherwood.
Good evening. Cynthia Mariel. In following Wayne, I too want to make sure that listeners now, when this meeting is being livestreamed, as well as who refer to the council meeting at a later date, make sure that they hear these comments, which are the city manager's comments on the junction from last week's meeting dated February twenty-seventh, 2019. Those comments are on the city's website under the initiative tab for the junction development. In addition, please look at the notes from the first weekly phone conversation among NDC, the city council, and the city staff that took place on March first. The key point amongst many, many major points is the city manager acknowledged last week that the plan for the junction that is now being reviewed by the county was never approved
Good evening. Jessica Landman, Ward One. I really enjoyed the presentations earlier this evening. A lot of good news about the city. And I'm sorry to say the junction continues to be kind of the outlier and that's the way it is, but we're getting right down to it. I'm here in advance of the March nineteenth DRC meeting to ask you guys a question. Which hat will the city be wearing at that DRC meeting? Will it be the government hat or the developer hat? Normally, park and planning gives Tacoma a seat at the table when the DRC meets to discuss a project in our city to represent residents' interests and pose questions to developers wearing a government hat. But on March nineteenth, the project will be the junction and the city is a partner in that development. And it's the developer who will be in the hot seat. When others at the table ask tough questions like how this project is going to impact traffic and pedestrians, parking and emergency access, bikes and buses, will you sit silently if NDC makes claims or asks for waivers that the city hasn't authorized and doesn't agree with? For example, if NDC says that safety standards for the line of sight around a blind curve should be waived or that the number of parking spaces required should be lower because, quote, "overflow parking will not be a problem for neighbors," what will you say? We need to know if you're going to be speaking as the developer or as our city's advocate. Contrary to what Ms. Ludlow said in her statement that's on the city website, it is not really possible for the city to function effectively as, and I quote, "both champions of the project and as technical staff reviewers." She said that "we have been careful to keep those roles separate and in particular to provide objective technical planning information." While I beg to differ, the city has not been providing that information, indeed has not even reviewed many of the documents that NDC submitted before they were submitted. In the area where the city has had the lead and does have the lead, stormwater and trees, technical review there has fallen woefully short. Our review of the stormwater plan reveals massive deficiencies with missing information on soils, inadequate capture and treatment capacity being planned, even as our rainfalls mount and the city is proposing to call for a climate emergency in our laws. This means risk to downstream properties. Our review of the tree plan shows many trees taken out, stripping of a hillside too steep to meet county forestry requirements, and no landscaping after tree removal. So if the DRC is looking to the city for substantive answers on trees and stormwater, the answers they get will be more like champions of the project and not objective staff reviews. So again, I ask you, will you side with the developer or will you be our good government representatives when the DRC meets?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Wallace. I live in Ward One. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who has worked to choose Chief DeVall. I want to highlight something he said in his presentation today, which I flipped through the report and I didn't see it in the report, but his mention of the mediation that he's going to put into place. That is out of something that passed in Maryland in 2016 called House Bill ten-sixteen. And it really only took one presentation to him for him to realize that that was something that we needed and he would do without, like, very much hesitating. Well, there was no hesitation, but everything takes time. And I know he's already working on it. So I just, with, with what, with Maryland, we think we're so progressive. Well, anyway, with Maryland being one of fourteen states in the United States that actually has the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights, this is actually- has the Law Enforcement Officers Bill of Rights, this is actually huge, you know, what he's stepping forward to do. So I hope that everybody will take advantage of it. And of course, I totally trust that you will support him in every way. But I just want to say one more thing. I think that hopefully, maybe to get it out to the community that this is a new option. And if we can show that we're making this a success in Tacoma Park, it could spread to other departments across Maryland, because to the best of my knowledge, nobody else has taken an on board. So perhaps you can do something like have a role-playing mediation for the public so they could see what it's really like to do. Not everybody in the world has been through mediation, much less with police officer. So I think that to take any fear out of it, it would be good to do some kind of education about it, not just leaflets. So anyway, thank you very much. We're on a roll.
And thank you, Ms. Wallace, for your advocacy on this. All right, any other public comments? Okay, great. Any other public comments?
Good evening. My name is Burn Kelly. I'm representing myself as someone who lives in a flood-prone area known as Hell's Bottom. It's a bottom. It's a holler. And I need to holler at you about competency. The competency and the incompetency exists here in our city with certain people. When DeLester Monk claimed to be the city engineer, I told the city, you cannot have someone claim to be an engineer when there's a title law and they're not trained to be a qualified engineer. So we have now a PE, a professional engineer. In the firms I've worked with, Duberan Davis, Bendire, Environmental Quality Resources, and Benke Nursery Companies, I've done a lot of stormwater management work. I just completed the green infrastructure course given by Montgomery County, and I work with Ann English, River Smart Homes, Raincheck, and Rainscapes Stormwater Management. What I'm seeing is, and what I don't see is, peer review by one engineering firm or one engineer in our office to another. I have on good information that there have been serious mistakes made by the city engineer and his competency to use TR-55 program, okay? That's an essential program that engineers need to use to quantify stormwater management runoff. The plans I've seen thus far do not represent anything. Cindy, you and Peter had those pictures of the floods we were having. We had another one in September. It's two inches and half an hour. The streets all below the junction, Poplar, Second, they fill from gutter to gutter, and they flooded my property. I have the floodplain maps from FEMA. You don't have the floodplain maps from FEMA. The floodplain goes all the way up Poplar, okay? This is a huge problem. We have more massive amounts of moisture in the atmosphere, and you all, you guys were seriously talking about it, are scared, just like me, to see this rushing water come through Hell's Bottom. Our pipes don't handle what is there now. So we need to have peer review, independent peer review, of whatever the city's engineer does. One engineer does not make for a team. I've seen this city ignore the stream that was out front during, I was on Tri Committee Chairman of the building of the community center, the rebuilding, and we pointed out that there was a stream here, and we had to spend all that money on that moat, and we never got our gem. That's another representation of incompetency and not listening to professionals, all right? I'm licensed as a qualified environmental planner and a landscape architect. I work with civil engineers and structural engineers all the time. And I get reviewed, and I get checked, and I submit, and I work with these people, and I need their stamp, and they need my stamp. And you all need, we, the people, and me, the property owner, need you to have more professional review.
Thank you. Any other public comments this evening? Seeing none, we will move now to our legislative update. Councilwoman Kostick, do we have any updates this week?
Yeah, I have just a couple I'll briefly mention. We submitted testimony for three bills in the past week. One is HB 1266/SB 754, which we supported with an amendment. That is the National Capital Strategic Economic Development Program, and that would provide, potentially provide some additional funding to the city. And thanks to Samira for taking a look at that really closely and suggesting a useful amendment that would allow government agencies to be included as eligible institutions. We also submitted support for HB 150 with an amendment. Thank you to Talisha for working on that. And this is a bill related to opportunity zones. And thanks to Councilmember Circe for noticing that the business entity listed in the bill does not include retail. So that's something that our lobbyist has been talking with members in Annapolis about and trying to see if we can get that changed and sort it out. And then finally, we submitted support for HB 277 SB 249, which is an initiative to limit or reduce greenhouse gases in the transportation sector. And finally, on Saturday is the bond bill hearing for the library, and Mayor Stewart plans to be there to testify in support of that.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to other council comments. Any council comments this evening? Councilwoman DiBala. You guys don't like going first.
Whatever. Couple things. Thank you for the ADU presentation. I've been asking, I've been bugging people about that one for a while. So thank you. That was really interesting. And I, anybody who wants a copy in Ward Two, just let me know, and I'll send the materials out if you missed it today. LEDs are coming to Ward Two. They started today, so there's a process to, if the light winds up being in your bedroom window, there's a process to request a shield. Let me know.
And not just your bedroom window.
Right. And not just your bedroom window, anywhere in your house. And I was going to remind you to speak to county planning review.
Oh, yes. You had asked me today. I had mentioned a week or so, I don't know, the week's blur, that I had written to Gwen Wright, who is the director of the county planning department, requesting some, a response to some questions that we had, and whether or not she would be available to come speak to us before March 19. She apologized for her delay in responding and said that she would respond soon. So that was the response I got this afternoon.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have a date for a presentation by the county?
Or her responding by email. So she said she would respond, and sorry for the delay.
Just want to get that out there, in case somebody was expecting it later tonight or...
Yep.
And last, the reference earlier to bus safety has to do with Ethan Allen Avenue. It continues to be, it's probably not the only place, but it continues to be a real problem for cars passing the stop bus, especially in the morning. And we've been, I'd like to speak to you about the idea of going to SHA and bringing it to them in our next meeting with the SHA, because police efforts have really ramped up, and it still hasn't, it hasn't been enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kostick.
Thank you. I thought I'd be talking too long if I was the first one to go, so I wanted to give somebody else a chance. I just have a bunch of meeting dates I want to share with everyone. The BF Gilbert Neighborhood Association is having a meeting on March 26. That's a Tuesday. I don't have it in front of me right now. I believe it's at 7:30 in the firehouse. And that will be the first in-person meeting that the association has had in several years. So it's a good opportunity to get out and meet your neighbors if you haven't met some of them, and talk with me. Mayor Stewart will also be there, and we'll have a chance to discuss city issues as well. We also have chosen a date for the next SS Carroll Association meeting, which will be on April 7. It's a Sunday from 2 to 4 p.m., and we're still determining what, where the location will be for that one. I have been talking with DC Councilmember Brandon Todd's staff about the meeting that he has been working to organize with DDOT, Pepco, and Washington Gas regarding the issues on Eastern Avenue. And it looks like we're getting close to finalizing a date for that. We're tentatively looking at the week of March 20th, March 21st, and so hopefully we'll have a final date on that and can share that soon. And then finally, Ms. Braithwaite from Public Works is working on scheduling a meeting for Guti Avenue residents to follow up on the discussions we had in the fall for new sidewalk construction plans. So you can anticipate getting some information about that in the next couple of weeks. And that's it. Thank you.
Great. Councilmember Smith?
First, I'd like to follow up with staff and see if we can get a Coffee with a Cop meeting for Ward Five sometime this month. I think that would be really helpful, so we can share some of this data that the chief told us. And the other thing that I want to say is, I've been waiting a long time to say this, but next month, we will have Flower Avenue Construction Meeting. Tentative date is April 4. So save the date, April 4. It will start at 7 p.m. I assume it's going to be at Washington-Aventis University. That's usually where we have these meetings. But it's been a long time coming, so you will get more information about this, but April 4. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Councilwoman Circe.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to thank everyone who helped with the testimony for HB 105. As Councilmember Kostick mentioned, it was a very interesting exchange. But fingers crossed, Delegate Wilkins said that she submitted the amendment. And for those who don't understand what was actually being proposed by the governor is to add opportunity zone businesses to a current tax rebate program that was originally developed as an incentive program for manufacturers. And so what they want to do is add businesses in opportunity zones and make them eligible for these types of expansion state rebates. So if you have, you hire more than 10 people, you get 5.25% state tax rebate, you know? So it actually could be really beneficial, but they, except they excluded retail. That was the only one they did. So, so, don't know if it's going to go anywhere, but we all did our due diligence. And so thank you to the city attorney, deputy city manager, Councilmember Kostick, everyone that pitched in on Monday to try to get that out the door.
If I can also add, Councilmember Circe was the only person who looked at this bill, and among, you know, tons of people in Annapolis, everyone who noticed this. So huge find, the fact that you're doing that.
It was weird. There was lots of commotion, I'm going to say, on New Hampshire Avenue. It looks like there was the WSSC, it looked like some kind of water main issue. I have not driven over there today, so I, fingers crossed, it's all done. I doubt it.
Well, the recs still have water today.
Okay. Well, that's good. But I did want to mention that that was, that was particularly problematic and a mess. And I know things happen, but it kind of goes back to some of the conversations that we had before with Pepco about making sure that we're not just being made aware when their construction vehicles and water is being shut off, but if there's some way we can get notification as they're on their way to break open New Hampshire Avenue, that would be great. And lastly, I want to thank the city manager and deputy city manager for the work on the flyer that has gone out to homes that will be impacted by the small cell that will be implemented near, I guess, I don't know, on Merrimack. I don't know if it's passed or not, but I appreciate you all getting information out to residents in both English and Spanish. So thank you very much.
Great. I just have a couple of updates. A lot of people did my already updates. It's that time of year again for the MML If I Was a Mayor for a Day essay contest. I just picked up the essays from Piney Branch. We do, we've done this now for the fourth year. We also pick students here in Tacoma Park, as well as submit their essays to the state. This year, we all have the students come in, and I think I'm going to have more than one, come in on March 22. Usually, they're here in the city offices in the morning. So if any of my colleagues want to pop by in the morning of March 22 to meet the winners of the essay contest, please let me know. The other update I just want to give is that Delegate Wilkins' Just Cause Eviction Bill is moving forward. The Montgomery County delegation voted in support of it, 17 to 6. And so now it is being considered. And you can go to Annapolis on Tuesday at 1 p.m. to testify or submit testimony in writing. So I really do encourage people to do that and continue to support her bill. That's it for me tonight. I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you. I got a couple things to share. One is that the application process for the fiscal year 2020 grants program is underway. And we, this year, we really changed the way that it was advertised. We changed the, changed it to an online application. We got a lot of social media interest in it. We received 22 letters of interest this year, and there were seven organizations that were first-time applicants, and they look awesome, that really are a little bit different and represent some segments of our community that haven't really participated in these before. So I think the Grants Review Committee is going to have a challenge. But it's very exciting that the work that our grant staff person, Jen, and our media specialist, Donna, and everybody put together to get the word out and to make it an easy process worked really well. So we'll see how that goes through the process, but I think you should all be really thrilled that there are people who want to participate in it and that we've been making that connection on that area. Wanted to note, and Ms. Circe, I didn't have a chance to give you a heads-up on this one earlier today, but we received word from RideOn that the bus shelter that they own at University and Merrimack will be removed during the Purple Line construction. It's not a good bus, that shelter, anyway, so it's probably, hopefully they don't bring the same one back when it's over. But, you know, I appreciated that we got the heads-up from RideOn, that it's being removed just as a courtesy. And it's also one of these things that make us think about, how do we, this isn't something that would normally show up on the Purple Lines kind of notice website thing. So for those kinds of things, we're trying to think about, how do we keep people informed? If it's just one or two things, that's fine, but if there's, ends up being a number of these things, we'll need some system. So we'll just think about that.
One thing I will say is that the RideOn folks, MTA, and Purple Line Transit Partners are all working together. So we could also just send a note to say, hey, by the by, when you send out your BLAST, if you are relocating different bus stops, if you could try to make sure that that's included as well, because they're aware, I think they just may be relying on, you know, RideOn to actually make the notification.
Right. So I just, you know, just, I think part of this is to monitor about how does the messaging get out for these things that are a little different than the other kinds of messages. The Maryland Department of Transportation, State Highway Administration, is sending out a mailing about its vision study of transportation needs at Tacoma Junction. The mailing is going out to residents in the Tacoma Park area. The announcement includes an invitation to be considered for a seat on the study stakeholder advisory group, which they call the SAG, which will meet up to five times to advise SHA on community engagement regarding the project. SHA has a little committee to choose the members of the SAG from the people who apply. I've got a link here, but you'll see the flyers around for how to apply. Ways to share opinions about the junction's transportation and safety improvements will be coming out soon. That'll include, I think, online surveys, a community charrette-type thing in the middle of the summer. So a variety of things will be, will be shared by SHA. One of the things is that the, that the city can have a... One of the things is that the, that the city can have a spot on the SAG, and so, I'd like to just talk with you a little bit about who that representative should be. This really is not to make decisions about the design, but to talk about the community engagement part for, to ensure that people are really weighing in on the, on the options that S.H.A. is considering. So, it's trying to make sure that it's clear that this is more a process-oriented committee as opposed to a, we prefer this option kind of committee. At least, that's my understanding from what the communications I've had from S.H.A. On the Tacoma Junction development, last week, the city had its first weekly update call with representatives of NDC as kind of this new formal way. Notes from the calls will be made available on the city's website site. The notes from last week have been posted, and we, I think there'll be a little bit of tweaks about the next call, so I appreciate especially the work of Councilwoman Kostic on, on coordinating that effort. And I will be out of town Friday through Sunday this weekend, so that's it. Yes. May I back up just a second?
Absolutely.
On the S.H.A. study, so the flyer says that anyone who's interested needs to apply by March 15th, which is next Friday.
That's right.
And that's still true?
That's still true, yes.
Okay, just wanted...
Yes, it's a, it's a, it's a quick turnaround time. In fact, at first, they had a, they had a confusing thing where they're online that had a different date, but they've got that straightened out. It's going to be a very small committee, from what I've heard, so I'm not sure exactly, you know, they're trying to pick a variety of people, how they do that, I'm not sure.
What are they asking for in the application? Is it...
You know, I didn't, I didn't go online, I saw the earlier one, but it's, it's a very quick thing about, why are you interested in, in being on this?
Great, all right, we will now move on to our work session tonight, and that's a discussion of the Climate Change Emergency Resolution. I think everyone should have been able to review a draft of this. I want to thank Councilwoman DeBala for helping move this forward, and with our Sustainability Manager before, oh, we didn't announce Gina's baby!
She had a baby.
She had the baby, and she did this before she had the baby, how nice. And...
Thank goodness we did not make her work on this after she had the baby.
And thanks to the Committee on the Environment as well. I don't know, Councilwoman DeBala, if you wanted to say anything, or...
Yeah, just very quickly, so, so Councilmember Kovar and I are introducing this for everyone's The resolution does two things, it declare, it points out the urgency of a, of the climate situation we're in, declares an official emergency, and also importantly, for everyone to understand, sets direction for the planning process that we're about to begin. So, we've, the city did a, did a plan, a sustainable energy plan a few years ago, most of that is done. It's time to take another look, and this sets a fairly high bar for what, for how aggressive we would like to, to have the recommendations look. We'd like to have the, what, what we would like to have the consultant look at in terms of not just the same old same old, but really stretching as far as we can go. The direction also includes fairly extensive insistence on a public process for doing this plan over the next few months. So, that, that, that the public, the various components of the public in Tacoma, in the city are, are included in what this might mean. And also importantly, at least in my mind, it points out the importance of including people who will be the most affected by climate change as it happens, which, the more, the more vulnerable groups in the city, not just, not just the folks who've been involved in energy efficiency planning up until now. So, just to, just to, to point out the speed, the scope, and the severity of, of climate change, how it's changed in the past year, I want to quote a Blair student from earlier this week, that it's no longer a future problem, it's a now problem. And I think anybody with a wet basement knows that. And to refer to a PBS NewsHour special just this last week, an author of a book on climate change saying, "It is worse, much, much worse than you think." So, that's the why, why are we doing this now? And the what is, is to embrace this much more aggressive planning process, come up with proposals, budget implications, how long it would take to do different, different actions, so we're not just declaring a, a concept, we're actually taking some steps here to look at it. So, with that, I've probably said more than enough, I'll let Councilwoman Kovar speak.
Well, if the mayor is...
I yield the rest of my infinite time.
I'll take your infinite time and double it. Thank you, and really, Councilmember DeBala took the lead on this, and I just, as I often do, chipped in a few thoughts, but I think it's really important, we're definitely in a crisis, there's no other way to put it, we're in an emergency situation. It's true in the world, it's true in our country, it's true here in our city, because we're a part of it, and I think we've done a lot of, we've done a lot of things and taken a lot of steps to try to address that, maybe more than some places have, but right now, we're in the process of this year's round of our priority-setting effort, and we're going to be developing a document that we're voting on, we're developing it, we'll be voting on it a bit later this month, and I think this is a natural time to underline the significance of this issue specifically. And to me, it's not just a symbolic thing, but it is something that will really emphasize for ourselves and our own work and for the larger community, and I hope for the staff and some of the other resident committees that work on this, that working to address climate change, what we can do at the local level, is a major, major priority. And the only other thing I'll, I'll say, two other things, one, we've gotten a number of suggestions since this document came out, including from the Environment Committee, and we can certainly look at making further adjustments. I don't know that we're wordsmithing anything tonight, but one of the other things you often hear from, not here in the city, but from elsewhere, is it's just too expensive, people will say, it's cost too much to address climate change, and it might, it might cost some more if the alternative was free, but the alternative, which is doing nothing now, is not free, it costs really a lot more, and we're beginning to see it now, just in terms at the local level, that we've all seen and we've talked about it several times here this evening already, in terms of the greater flow of water and, and what that means. That's just one example, and you can't say one specific storm was the, was the result of that, but you see, you know, the tornado that we saw and all these other kinds of unusual events happening at times of the year that you don't normally expect them. And so, I think the point is not that it costs something to address it, and then it's free to do nothing, if we do nothing, it costs us even more. So, I think this is a resolution that aims at putting us on the pathway toward, not that we're already not taking it seriously, but taking it in the level of seriousness that it really needs to be. Thank you.
I hope that the language as you read it reflects a couple of things. One is, is to look at actions that dovetail with our, our other priorities, particularly housing, and particularly racial equity. That, that's an important piece of, of this as intended and hopefully as written.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I'd like to thank my colleagues for working on this, I think it's very important issue, you know, for the country, but I would like you to consider adding, I shared an email with you about what's going on in California, about how they're electrifying buildings, and I'm not saying that's something that we need to do in the next year or two, but maybe five years out, I think for new construction, that's something that we should really push for electrifying of new construction in the city, because that's where a lot of the carbon is being used. So, thank you again, this is really important.
City Manager?
Yes, I guess as, I would like to encourage a little bit of change on the emphasis on, on the resolution, in that this really focuses on greenhouse gas emissions in buildings, and it only a little bit addresses or talks about resiliency and stormwater impacts. And to me, the, it is the flooding of homes that is more likely to hurt the regular people in Tacoma Park that have small homes, don't have large incomes. And so, one of the things that I'm concerned about is at least to write this so that there's a little bit of equitable look at both greenhouse gases and resiliency in terms of flooding. And I think that that's particularly important when it comes to race equity approach to this. The emphasis about, you know, redoing buildings for greenhouse gases, I just imagine, to me, that's something that could be better done at a county or a larger level. I recognize we like to be the leader, I recognize that sometimes we need to take that step, but we certainly have a, you know, the amount that we might save from our buildings in the greater scheme of the region, I think is less than us needing to protect the buildings that we have and the people that we have in the building. So, don't want to get into that as a full argument, but I would like to at least have, beef up a sentence or two in here that, that allows, as you, as you consider the results of the study and consider some of the options that, that come forward, that that, some interest in resiliency and addressing flooding be something that could be equally considered by you as, as we look at addressing climate change.
Yeah, and I think that came up also in our priority meetings, and I would support us putting that, more of that in the resolution. And I do think there are also, and I very much appreciate everyone putting this together, and I look forward to the new plan that we have, and I think we all, and this gets at it, in the commitment to move forward, because I think what we've done, and I think conversations around the LED lights have actually reinforced this, is that many times, we've, we've done the low-hanging fruit in this community. The next step that we are about to take is, is going to be hard, it's going to mean sacrifice, it's going to mean resources on our part. And so, I thank you for bringing this forward to us, for us to make this commitment, but I think we also need to acknowledge that we are making this commitment, we are serious about it, and that means moving forward, especially when we get the recommendations back and the plan, that there's going to be some tough things that we're going to have to move forward, and they're not going to be popular, and we're going to need to do a lot of outreach and education and work on those things, and those will take resources, so... Councilwoman Kostic?
Yeah, thank you for bringing this forward. I would also support adding more language regarding stormwater. We heard tonight from a resident who talked specifically about the issues in the city and our need to focus on ways to solve the increasing number of challenges we'll have with stormwater. I had a brief question, and it doesn't have to be answered for me right now, but as you're looking at, at wording of this, the second to the last, be it further resolved that the city council seeks results of this plan and recommendations from the city Sustainability Manager by December 31st, 2019. I was confused about what, what the results of this plan meant and what exactly that was intended to mean, if, if it was seeking a plan for, for what those results would be, or...
Yeah, results of the planning effort, I guess is another way of putting it.
So, if we can just make that a little clearer, I think that would be helpful. And then finally, I like that this ties in with our housing and racial equity priorities, and I'd just like to encourage us to think more about how it could possibly tie in with transportation and looking at alternatives for the ways that we currently use our cars to do a lot of things. And I'd like to see more cooperation, if it's possible, through, between the Safe Road Waste Committee, as it's getting started again, and the Committee on the Environment, to address some of these issues, and think about ways that possibly there could be collaboration or ways to think about the impact we could potentially have, and some of the cutting-edge things we could do to address emissions from transportation and the, the way that that contributes to climate change as well.
All right. Seeing no other lights this evening, we'll come back, we'll vote on this next week, I think, so if there are any additional, in addition to stormwater, resiliency, and transportation, if there are other things...
Electrifying.
Electrifying, sorry, electrifying, yes, sorry. Electrifying. If there are additional changes, if we could, that we want to discuss, if we could get those circulated before Monday at noon, that'd be great. All right. Thank you, everyone, and with that, we will adjourn.